Fourth, 2020, 2:00 PM, Goochlin County Board of Supervisors meeting. We begin with the invocation Reverend Allen from Chief Cornerstone Baptist Church, sir. And if you will stand, if you are able, thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. Let us pray. In the Father God, we come in the precious and righteous name of Jesus, praying for this board. God, I ask you in Jesus Christ's name to give them everything they stand in need of to lead the people here in Goochlin County. Oh, God, we pray much for peace, love, and joy. And we ask you in Jesus Christ's name, oh, God, to be with the debitants on the highway today, oh, God, keep them safe. Thank you for our sheriff, for our county ministry, oh, God. We just pray for all of our elected officials. And I pray, God, in Jesus Christ's name, we are working together in love and peace and understanding. God, in the name of Jesus Christ, I pray when they make decisions, oh, God, they'll make decisions based on the whole county. I pray, God, that they'll make decisions based on everyone from the east to the west, north and south. God, in Jesus Christ's name, I pray that you will keep their families safe, oh, God, and keep them safe wherever they may travel, and keep everybody safe between these walls this evening, oh, God. God, we thank you for Goochlin County, and we thank you for all that you do. Watch over them and keep them. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Allen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you, Mr. Allen, Reverend Allen. Chair comments. The only comment I have at the moment, and I believe everyone is well aware that we just had an election yesterday with indeterminate results at this point on many of the races. Robin Lynn from our Goochlin County Electoral Board is still in a provisional ballot hearing at this point, counting and determining additional provisional ballots. When they get out of that meeting, I'm going to allow him time to come in and give us the latest numbers so we kind of know where Goochlin County stands. Some of the numbers that have been posted right now on the election board are not totally complete because there are still additional ballots being counted and worked on. So with that, we will begin our regular meeting. Next item on agenda is the county administrator comments. Mr. Young, please.
Good afternoon, Board and citizens of Goochlin County. A few comments from me today. Citizens are invited to participate in a countywide cleanup day to be held in November 14th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Byrd Elementary School, Central High School Cultural and Educational Complex, and Company 3 Fire Station in Centerville. All supplies will be provided. Please call 804-556-5340 for any questions. Simultaneously, the county will also be holding a tire amnesty and document shredding event at the Fairgrounds Route 522 vacant parking lot, sometimes referred to as the old Fairgrounds Lot. We also will be offering a free COVID-19 testing event and seasonal flu vaccine clinic. It's scheduled to occur in Goochlin County on Wednesday, November 11th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at Haydensville Fire and Rescue Station 6. The Chickamaheeny Health District is holding the free COVID-19 testing event and seasonal flu vaccine clinic in participation with Goochlin County. The COVID-19 testing event and seasonal flu vaccine clinic will be conducted drive-through style at the Haydensville Fire Rescue Station 6 located at 4810 Three Chop Road in Western Goochlin. Individuals will access the free drive-through COVID-19 testing and flu clinic via the Three Chop Road entrance to Haydensville Fire Station 6. Individuals planning to participate are encouraged to pre-register for a COVID-19 test by calling Pre-registration is not required but encouraged. Walk-ins are welcome, and no insurance is required. The free drive-through vaccine clinic is open to ages six months and up until, and is up until supplies last. Please wear short sleeves. One of the best defenses against the flu is getting your flu vaccine. Individuals participating in the COVID-19 testing and flu vaccine clinic are required to wear a face covering. All individuals should remain in their vehicles at all times unless otherwise instructed. Goochlin County encourages all residents to get their seasonal flu vaccine again this year. Individuals unable to attend the COVID-19 testing event are encouraged to contact their primary care provider or local pharmacy about other opportunities to get tested for COVID-19. We also just wanted to announce we did have a ribbon cutting, which we attended today. My computer went out on me. For the Goochlin History Center located at 2924 River Road West. That will also be serving as the Goochlin County's welcome center for the county, so we're looking forward to that participation with them. Also wanted to announce that we also had Parks and Rec receive a prestigious award this week, and we'll follow up in December with a more formal presentation on that. That's all for today.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Young. Next item on the agenda is request to postpone agenda items in additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation. I did mention that if Mr. Lynn is able to make himself available, I would like him to speak. We'll fit him in where we can. Board, are there any other changes, additions, deletions? Okay, seeing none. Next item of business, citizen comment period. So open the citizen comment period. If you'd like to speak on any item concerning the county, please come forward, give us your name, your address, and please keep your comments, about three minutes.
You came from Lisa.
[laughing].
Didn't want to blindside you. Good afternoon, Board. Mr. Young, Lisa, Ms. Best C words, Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannakin Road. Oh, where's Tara? I'm sorry. Threw me. Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannakin Road. I attended the ribbon cutting down at the Historical Society, and I want to commend and endorse the efforts the county is making. My company, Highway Information Media, has since 2009 worked with VDOT and Virginia Tourism, and I am just excited to see an increasing profile for the tourism industry here in the county. I might mention, and I don't know if Mr. Kildus is here, yes, he is, on November 16th, Virginia Tourism Corporation and the Virginia Restaurant Lodging and Travel Association is having an in-person live people-in-the-same-building summit on tourism down at the Omni Hotel. Does require $150 registration, but I highly commend or recommend that the county have a presence there because the networking opportunities, as well as information on grants and abilities to collaborate with Virginia Tourism Corporation, the statewide organization, is information that you can gather there. I also would mention that just yesterday I had a conversation with Tad Thompson, who is the proprietor, manager of Takahoe Plantation, which is one of the premier historical spots in the county. And I would encourage, now that we have a visitor's center, that we do something to help him break free of the Richmond moniker that gets hung around his neck every time people reference Takahoe Plantation. They just don't seem to understand it is a Goochlin site, and we need to get that changed in people's minds if possible. So tourism, Virginia is for lovers. Whatever you love in Virginia, you can find it not more than two hours away, mountains or oceans, rivers, and whatever. Whatever you love on a vacation, you can find it in Virginia and possibly in Goochlin. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lyle. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Close the citizen comment period. Next item on our agenda is the minutes approval, approval of the minutes from September the 1st, 2020 meeting. Board, I assume you've read the meeting minutes? And if there are no corrections, may I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the September 1st, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. There's no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Meeting minutes are approved. The next section of our agenda is reports. The first is VDOT. We do have a report in our packet, and I do not, okay, sorry, there you go. Everybody's moved around in different places now, so thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Harlow. I'm with VDOT. I have the Ashen Residence. He'll be filling in for Mr. Winn today. Just wanted to say good afternoon to Mr. Young, Madam Chair, and Board members. Hope all is well with you. Did all of you get a chance to look at the report that was sent in from VDOT?
Yes.
Just to recap that report, wanted to go over, we had 109 work order requests. We completed 91. We had eight after-hour emergency call-outs during that time. We finished off our last primary mode. We're in the process of finishing that up now. That should be completed, weather permitting, within the next week or so. That will be our final mode for the year. Our area headquarters continue on pottle repairs, ditching, low shoulders, did I do that? Tree pruning and litter pickup. Recently, our area headquarters just completed their snow dry runs, which is where they load all of their snow equipment for the winter operations, and they run everything through to make sure we're good to go for the upcoming winter. That was all completed last week. Everything went through flying colors, so we're ready to go whenever that stuff starts falling. I'm not going to say it because I don't want it to fall. We do have a large-scale pipe project coming on Whitehall Road, Route 673. We've got a jack and bore project that's going to be happening between Route 611 and the bridge that goes over Big Licken Hole Creek. It's a pretty good-sized fill, so we've decided to contract it out, and we're going to bore a pipe under the road so we don't have to close the road for a long, lengthy period. So that should be happening within, hopefully around end of November, first part of December. So you'll see some stuff going on out there, but that's what it'll be. Most of the work will be done off of the road. They'll set up a bore pit down off of the road, so it'll be no interference to traffic at all. Philip did want me to mention Route 608 Davis Mill Road, should be approved for our no-truck restriction coming up within the next week or so. Once we get that approved, that'll be progressing into the next phase, which will involve the county and VDOT officials working together to see where we go from there. So that is looking good to be approved shortly. That's about all I have. Do you have anything for me?
All right, thank you, Mr. Harlow. Board, any VDOT questions? I do have one. There are no others. Back in March, we had talked about a speed study on Route 6 in the Georgia's Tavern area where Haydensville-Fife Road intersects there. And I know a lot of the speed studies have been put on hold because of COVID and the traffic patterns haven't been basically normal for months. Would you check on that? I'm not sure we got a response on that.
Okay.
I appreciate that very much.
I'll follow up on that and get back with you.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you for that report. I appreciate that. One quick one. I had a citizen reach out to me today, actually, that they were concerned with a couple of larger, older trees near the road where it looked like they were not in great shape and may lead to some problems going forward. So if you wouldn't mind just checking, it's at the entrance of Mannakin Farms. The street is Wilway, at the intersection of Wilway and Patterson. Evidently, there's a large tree on each side, left side and right side. If you just wouldn't mind taking a look to see if there's any danger there at all, I'd appreciate that.
All right, we'll take a look.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Peterson, you reminded me, we actually do have an old request for the same issue, trees on 605, which is Community House Road, very near 605 and 610. But they're actually on, I think they're on 605. They're dead trees, and I don't know if they're in your right of way or not. They look like they may be, but you can check and let us know, please.
And that was Community House Road?
Yes, sir.
Where was that at?
And Tapscott.
Tapscott, okay.
Right. They're actually two, maybe a couple hundred yards apart. They're actually very close to some power lines. And I don't know if Dominion wants to take a look at that, or you want to take a look at that, but...
Yeah, if they're really close, we can. That's what Dominion wants to do.
Okay, I understand. That's what, yeah, just let me know. Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next item is introduction of new county staff. Ms. Parrish.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Young. I'm Kelly Parrish, Director of Human Resources, and it is my pleasure to introduce the new county staff in the Convenience Center and the Treasurer's Office. Due to her resignation, Harvey Parkinson, who couldn't join us today, joined the Convenience Center staff on October 1st as a full-time attendant. Harvey retired from Dominion Energy where he was a quality specialist at the North Anna Power Plant. Her next new employee is here with us today. Her name is Janice Rutledge. Janice, would you please stand? Due to her resignation, Janice joined the Treasurer's Office as a Deputy Treasurer 1 on October 16th. Janice comes to us with customer service experience after serving as an accounting assistant for Covington Travel. Welcome to the Goochlin team. And this concludes the new hire report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish, and welcome. Okay, next item in our reports is the planning and development activity, which is in our board packet, as well as the account payable report, which is also in our board packet. Are there any questions on either of those? Okay, all right, moving right along. Next item is the consent agenda. Mr. Young, will you give us an overview of the consent agenda items?
Absolutely. Board, this afternoon, we have three items under your consent agenda. Item number one is a request to set a public hearing for December 1st, 2020, to consider the application of Life Care Medical Transports LLC, formerly known as Life Care Medical Transports, Inc., to operate emergency medical services vehicles in the county. Fire and Rescue has evaluated the application and believes that granting of the permit to Life Care for the limited purpose of providing non-emergency patient transport services from licensed medical care facilities in the county is necessary to assure the provision of adequate and continuing non-emergency medical transport services within the county. Should the Board of Supervisors grant a permit to Life Care, it would expire after two years, at which time Life Care may apply for renewal of the permit. Item number two, the Board is requesting to authorize the county administrator to execute the attached memorandum of understanding with Goochlin Pet Lovers to memorialize the working relationship with Goochlin Pet Lovers and the county. Item number three, the Board has requested to approve the 2021 holiday calendar. The calendar observes any holiday time designated by the governor as a legal holiday for the Commonwealth of Virginia. The governor has amended this calendar from time to time to include additional leave. If the Board continues the observance of the holiday time granted to the state for county employees, any additional time granted by the governor would also be granted to county staff. And that is all I have for today.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Young. Board, do we need any explanation or further information on any of these consent items? All right, I would assume that we will, someone would like to maybe make the motion to address all of them in a block?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as presented as a block.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peterson. Have a second.
Second.
Okay, photo finish there. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second to approve all three consent items, items on our consent agenda. If there's no further comment, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Oh, okay, consent items are adopted, approved. Okay, now, we'll get to new business. Some of this is going to be fun stuff. First up, we have Ms. Joy Klein, who's our Christmas Mother for this year, and she's going to be giving us a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the Board of Supervisors and Mr. Young for allowing me to have a couple of minutes today. Get started. I've been a resident of Goochlin County since 1980, so I've seen a few changes over the years, and I am extremely honored to be chosen as the Christmas Mother for 2020. And what a year to have that happen. But it's all good.
Yes.
There we go. That's my remote. So as I said, I am the Christmas Mother for 2020. My name is Joy Klein. One of the things I like to talk about, let me go back one, is the mission of the Christmas Mother program. In past years, we've provided food, clothing, toys, books, and essential items to our families that qualify in the county. And it can be a variety of things, families that have children, they're 60 or older, they're disabled adults. And so our idea here is to provide that value to them. 2019, if you go back and look a little bit, we served 249 families in Goochlin. That came to about 221 adults, 99 children, and we raised about $62,000 last year to support this program. One of the additional things is there are family adoptions that also occur on top of this, and we had 105 of those last year. So this year, our goal is to raise $75,000. I would like to say we started a couple months ago with this, and we have found that we are getting, we're almost halfway there. So for about a month into it, we're pretty excited. We do seek families and individuals, as well as businesses. Churches in the area are very important to adopting these families, and collecting food and essentials, supply items, which are going to be included with their gift cards, is a big item for us this year. So we had to take a little bit of a different approach, as you can well imagine. You know, some of the face-to-face had to be re-engineered and altered. So our volunteers have been working with applicants in a little bit a different way. Phones certainly have been our friend to do a great deal of this. We have been limiting our physical contact so that we're protecting not only our applicants, those families, but also our volunteers, which is such a big part of what we do. So one of the hard decisions that was made this year is there's no physical shopping for the gifts, no wrapping of the presents. Those of you who have been here for a number of years, the first two weekends in December are pretty big for the Christmas Mother, and the wrapping in that first Saturday is something that we won't physically see this year. However, gift cards, the food, the essentials, we're well on our way to getting that so that we do get to the next big day, which is December 12th. It's our distribution day, and is always a lot of fun to be a part of. We still have a great need in the county. I wanted to highlight a few of the things. This is not an all-inclusive, but this just, again, gets back to Goochlin County and how important our residents are to the success of this program. So, for example, Village Hills Subdivision, the Courthouse area is leading a food drive. Our Boy Scouts, PAC 710, they've been involved in past years. They're going to also be supporting one of the drives. You can imagine the school system this year is a little bit harder to get on that the way that we have probably seen in years past, but we do have one group right now that's helping us, and that's the National Honor Society. Essex Bank, close by, is also conducting a drive. And our Goochlin Fire Rescue, obviously very big in this. The Rotary Club of Goochlin, of which Dawn and I are members, we support the Christmas Mother program, especially on December 12th with the distribution. And believe it or not, the Goochlin Y has helped a little bit this year through some donations that they're providing us. So just a quick list here will show you the type of collections that we're looking for if you're interested and inclined to participate. You know, one of the big things here is, don't bring glass. And you can think about paper towels, you know, everybody goes out and buys what? These big old rolls of eight and whatever. Well, we can't put them into boxes very easily, so they would have to be those individually-wrapped items. But essentials like soap and shampoo, those are still, you know, those are big items for us this year since they've been hard to find. Sharing with you a few of the Christmas Mother dates. My letter went out in early October to ask for community support. We had two days in October that were our applicant verifications process, many thanks to the school system, as well as the Sheriff's Department, for helping guide this process through the parking lot, and it worked really well. You know, you either hide your stuff together and you got to go into one line, or you had to divert and come back. So it worked really, really well. We do have ongoing food drives with the Fire and Rescue. We have a food drive coming up with the Boy Scouts troop. Family adoptions will end on November 22. And then, again, we have our big distribution day to the families at Central High School, the education complex there. Just to give you an idea, right now, we are about par with the number of families that we supported last year. So still, you know, wondered whether or not we were going to see a huge uptick, and we did not. So it'll be about the same. These are just some pictures. This gives you a visual from the day that we did have our Christmas Mother at work, and we would verify the incomes of the individuals coming through the complex there, and it was a very successful two Saturdays in a row. If you look at the bottom-left picture, Cindy Valentine is the board president for the Christmas Mother, very dedicated. And Mina Potz, who's next to her, she and her husband worked with the school to figure out how to manage this whole parking lot thing, and it really, really went well. But you'll see some of the past Christmas Mothers here, Robin Hillman, Caveys Winston, Mark Jones is up there. It was a very successful couple of days. So here we are. We have a website. Visit us, send us an email. We have a hotline. We're on Facebook. We really do welcome an opportunity to do more and make a lot of wishes come true for this holiday season, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very worthwhile project that Goochlin does every year. Okay. Now, the agency presentations, public safety, I believe we'll begin in this order. They're shown in the packet, which is the sheriff, and then fire rescue, and then animal protection. So Sheriff Creasy, there you are.
Mr. Young, thank you for having me come out today. I really do appreciate it. What I'm going to go over, just a few things. I'm not going to entertain you all with numbers, data, or anything like that for calls for service. I'm just going to go over some of the accomplishments that we have done so far this year, along with what we're looking forward to completing later on this year and early in the next year. And the first thing to start it off, I can tell you, I'm very, very excited about this and proud that we were awarded accreditation. It was a challenging time with COVID, as we all know. It's been a challenging time for many things. But this is the first year for our accreditation that Goochlin County Sheriff's Office had a perfect score. So that was very, very impressive. And this was not a me thing, this was a Goochlin County Sheriff's Office thing. This was a, from Major East, Lieutenant Bear, First Sergeant May, Sergeant Lebo, we all worked at this as a team. And with us working as a team, we were able to accomplish this very, very important task. And I'm not going to read you the PowerPoint as it goes, but in there, it just shows a couple of things of what they look into, is management, operations, administration, and policies and procedures that we have. policies and procedures that we have. Also, one thing on what we have done this year, we have put new, we've never had Goochlin County Sheriff's Office core values, and we put those out there, all of the deputies, dispatchers, and administration staff as well. So we all live by those values. We also updated a mission statement and a vision statement. As of right now, we are 70% complete for updating and going through all of the standard operation procedures, which is very time-consuming and very tedious, but it's something that we're going to knock out before January 1. And we're currently reviewing and updating all communications 911 policies for the citizens with Chief Ferguson. Another update is some of, is what we've done. We've added a community division to our agency. We've had a huge increase in interest for people coming to Goochlin County Sheriff's Office. As you can see here, some of the new hires that we've had, we've hired the first-ever Goochlin Sheriff's Office Crime Analyst. We have a Communications Supervisor now, it's Tammy Witt, you'll see in another slide. You can see the deputies there that we've hired. And in the bottom right is our new K-9 Achilles, who's actually in training right now. Not pictured, we hired, which several of y'all know, Lieutenant Bear. We stole him from Henrico PD, who's with us now. And another one who's not there is Joseph Cook, who's in the Training Academy. He came from Breskman City Jail. And we're looking hopefully to hire three more soon. Sorry about that. Also, just a couple awards that some of our employees have received is, top left is Tammy Witt. She's a Communications Supervisor, and she received the 2020 DEMPSA Regional EMS Award, which is pretty big. I'm going to let Chief Ferguson go a little further into that when he's here. Also, to the right, you have Lieutenant Joe Warren, and Deborah Johnson is our Dispatcher of the Year, and he is a Deputy of the Year that was presented by the Masonic Lodge 141. Few community programs, what we do is, one, we just finally completed this spring Citizens Academy. Because of COVID, we had to put that on hold. A few things I'm going to highlight here for you is we have the medication disposal box that is located in the Sheriff's Office. If you have any unused medications, you can drop it off, throw it in there 24/7. Also, a retirement box for flags, for United States flags. If you don't know what to do them, do with them, give them to us, and we'll properly dispose them. We're also getting ready to start teaching a few classes at the beginning of next year. One is refuse to be a victim. We have four instructors that go around and teach that, along with any other classes such as identity theft, what to do in an active shooter event, you know, at local churches. You know, we taught a class here earlier on for the county staff as well. And we're trying to get rolling again since school's back in session. There's a Goochlin Middle School Law Enforcement Club, which we started last year. Couple organizational memberships that we belong to that I don't know if y'all are aware of, but Ty, if I figured this is where I'd throw it in there, just to highlight this one, is that we now have an MOU with the Goochlin County Schools, and that's the first-ever in Goochlin history, at least that I could ever, that I could find. So we got that. So with that, we know what the school's doing, the schools know what we're doing. You know, they know what the SRO is doing, everything, so we're all on the same page. And it's actually been a very pleasure working with Dr. Reilly and Dr. Armstrong and successfully completing that MOU. We also are members of Virginia Sheriff's Association. First time ever, we have 100% membership this year. So that's a pretty big thing for Sheriff's Office as well. Member of HADA, which is, it's a high-intensity drug tracking program, which gives us data where we can try to see the trends, trying to see what wave of drugs could be coming to us, trying to give us, let us know about it before it gets here, instead of reacting once it is here. We also officially joined, even though that we've been working with them since Major East actually started here, in the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. And then the bottom last two, where we're members of as well. A few things, and I'll tell you, I thank the Board for this, is providing cellphones to all deputies. That has truly been a game changer. They're not often in the office as they were. They're out on the roads where they can get through to people quicker when they call, and that has been a huge, huge game changer. I really do appreciate that. Now they don't have to use their personal phones, you know, to hit star 67 and call, or stop off somewhere and try to get a phone. As you can see there, we have two new radar trailers and also the signboards. So if you have a speed complaint somewhere, let us know. We can throw that out there, and we can collect the data and see if it actually is a valid complaint. And some of them are valid, and some of them aren't. Also, one other highlight is the prisoner cages in the cars. We're currently installing them now, and that's another game changer, is we've never had them except for court transportation, and it puts a barrier in between the prisoner and the deputy, which COVID is a great thing, but it also officer safety. A few things, training that we did with highlights, we had Lieutenant Diggs from Stafford. He's a great guy, came down and taught a class to everyone at Sheriff's Office on culture diversity. We're going to probably try to make that a annual thing for him coming down. He's such a great teacher and such a, just a great guy. We did a normal active shooter training. We have a new DARE officer, and we continue to do crisis intervention team training, which is training for mental health, dealing with subjects in crisis, and de-escalation procedures. Then we are starting our first-ever Goochlin Recruit Academy. So when all these three new recruits that are in the academy right now get out in December, they will immediately go into another academy here in Goochlin County. And that will be taught by Goochlin Sheriff's Office. We have members of Goochlin Fire and Rescue who's going to instruct it, State Police, Palatine Community Service Board is going to be there instructing some classes, Animal Control, Tim is going to be there, 911 Communications, and we're going to hit everything that they may have missed in the academy, but it's also, it's different between the agencies you work at. We want people to know what we do here in Goochlin and what Goochlin citizens expect. And they expect the best because they deserve the best. Then a couple of things we put out on Facebook, just our weekly stats. Sometimes it ends up being two weeks, but it's normally our weekly stats. And then, as you can see, Derek James Franklin, he's still wanted, so if y'all see him around, please give us a call. Here in Goochlin County, we don't take too kindly for drug dealers. So if you see him, please let us know. Also, for a couple of other things that we've done, just because of COVID, prescription delivery, we're well over 300 deliveries for that. And we did the candy costume and cops on Halloween, and this was such a great event. We gave away over 450 bags of candy, and that's to the kids. Only kids got it, maybe a couple of adults got maybe one or two. But the kids got it, so that can tell you how many people actually were there if we gave out 450, you know, for just kids. So we've decided regardless on COVID or whatever, wherever it is, you know, a year from now, we're going to do it again, just as a drive-through. So it was an awesome, awesome event. And this quick second to thank the community for their support, it's been very overwhelming. I think I've put on probably about 15 pounds since January 1, because they load us down with food. I mean, it is awesome, but that's what keeps a lot of the deputies and dispatchers going, is they know they have to support in Goochlin County. All right, moving forward, I'm going to have Major East start making his way up here because he's going to do a quick demo for you. But just some of the highlights on here is we have future upgrades, working with Scott Foster and General Services, having future upgrades in General District Court for Security. Also, a new prisoner van is on order, we're just waiting to get it in. And the new CAD and MRMS system, which I cannot wait till that, because that's going to make things a whole lot easier. We're also working on a new website. We're completely redoing it. Project Lifesaver, fingers crossed, I'm hoping it's done by an active by January 1. Handle with Care should be going out next week, which is a great, great thing for where we can gather information. People who want to volunteer, if they have an elderly mother or father who has dementia, we can actually put that in our computer, you know, the information on them. Cop Camp, that got shot down because of COVID, but we're going to do it this summer. And then a new thing that we're doing is Home Watch, Business Watch, and Worship Watch, which is going to be a program where we're doing extra security and drive-bys to the people on vacation, or business, or Worship Watch during the times that they need to say it the most. And hopefully, the Home Watch is going to come out real quick, but the others is still in the making. All right, this is Rapid SOS, where Major East is going to go over it with you. It's a system that we actually, we uncovered just by a relationship that we had with another agency, and this is something that I think is great, it's going to help us out tremendously in locating people, and it didn't cost us anything.
Like that.
Good afternoon, how are y'all?
All right, good afternoon.
All right. Let's see if I can get back to this other screen here. I'm looking my password here. This program's called Rapid SOS, and as you can see, it's a web-based program, but it is secure. We have to be within our network to use it. But as the sheriff said, it didn't cost us a dime. Rapid SOS is a company that they support over 4,700 PSE apps or 911 centers across the country. So I figured might as well add Goochlin to that list and get us on board as well. But the software's great. It's funded by private partners, whether it's Apple, Uber, Google. I saw they had Sirius XM sign up. And what it does is when somebody calls 911 from a cellphone, it activates all of the features in the phone, the GPS. Well, you may have location services turned off, but it activates them, turns them on automatically, and it immediately sends that signal to the local PSE app. So if you dial 911 in Goochlin, it's going to come to our 911 center. And a lot of times, they're actually going to get, this map will show up faster than the actual phone ringing in the office. So it'll give us exact location of where that call came from. So I'm going to call 911 here real quick. Don't try to sit home unless you have an emergency. But I've already called dispatch, he knows it's coming.
And keep in mind, we didn't have this, when someone called 911, we couldn't tell where they were calling from.
So it's already popped up, she hasn't answered yet. Hey, it's Unit 2 with a test call. Thank you. All right, so as soon as you dial 911, it's going to plot you out on the map where your location is. So over here on the left side, you can see the phone number they called, and you can see where it put us here.
Actually put us in the building.
Yep, so just satellite mode, and I can zoom in and see kind of where we are right here in the picture. Inside the building, because you have walls surrounding us, it makes it a little bit harder to get the signal, but because it's actually using the device itself, it's a lot more accurate than anti-alley, and actually using the cell towers to triangulate. So we can actually get pretty darn close to where that phone is. We did a test with it last week with a deputy in the field, and it put him within 15 feet of where his car was parked down in Centerville. And what's really cool about it is every 30 seconds to a minute, it pings that phone. It'll continue to ping the phone for up to 10 minutes after you dial 911. So if you call 911 to hang up like I did, it's going to continue to ping my phone. So if I'm moving, it's going to follow me. So if somebody's in the trunk of a car and they dial 911, they can't talk, dispatch can look at the screen and watch that phone traveling down the interstate. If we have somebody on the James River, which happens all the time, and they're floating the river, and they get cold because it's getting dark out, and they walk off and find the train tracks, and now they're walking on the train tracks, they call 911, where are you? Now we can actually see on the train tracks where they are and get help to them quickly and get the train stopped. So it's going to save lives, and it saves lives across the country. It's an application we came across. We, our dispatch supervisor in Palatine, they have it in Palatine, and we thought it was great. We signed up for it. It took a couple of months to get Apple and Google to give us the blessing, but as you see, we got our map on there now so we can actually do it. And making a few changes to our communications policy, and then we'll officially be live with it. This is going to be very helpful for fire rescue. We have so many car accidents on the interstate where somebody's driving down 64, and they see a crash, they call 911. What milepost are you? I don't know, I don't remember where I passed. So dispatch will be able to see which mileposts they are and then get help quickly into that location. Somebody calls 911 from their house on a cellphone, and they can't talk or they hang up, we can see on the map which house it is and get help to them versus having a landline 911 call. So pretty powerful, pretty good stuff, and I'm excited for us to use it. It's going to save lives in our county, so. Free of charge, that's the best part. Thank you very much.
That's awesome. Thank you very much.
All right. And last one, is why do I have facial hair? We are participating in No Shave November, and what it is, we're obviously not shaving for the month of November to draw awareness, to get people to see us and ask why we're not shaving, because we do have a strict grooming policy at Sheriff's Office. But so we can make a raise awareness for the American Cancer Society and people who fight every day for cancer. We are doing it, No Shave November, this month, this year, in memory of Deputy John Casey, who passed away last year for, you know, for his fight of cancer, just it ended. Deputy Casey was a great guy. He was very active in the community. He was a Board of Director of the Company Two Fire Rescue. His wife, Ann, you know, everybody knows Ann. But he also retired from Department of Corrections, so he had a lifetime of serving others, and whether the corrections as a deputy, or the fire department, or even in CASA, you know, helping Ann out with that. So that's why we have facial hair, but that is the reason. It's in memory of him to raise money and awareness for cancer. Any questions? Sorry if I ran through that pretty quick.
No, that was great, Sheriff. Any questions for the sheriff?
Sheriff Crease, thank you for everything you and your team does. Very interested in the Community Watch program. As you know, I have a pretty active community and neighbors. If our HOA wanted to get involved in that, how would we, who would we reach out to? How would we do that?
Was that the neighborhood watch?
The Community Watch program, yeah.
Oh, yes. That's a, you can either reach out to Sergeant Creasy or Sergeant Lebo, and they'll take it from there.
Thank you very much.
Any other? Okay, well, I also, thank you. I know it's been, I know it's been a difficult time for public safety, but thank you for all your work and all your folks there. Appreciate it.
And thank you for y'all's support.
You're welcome. Okay. Next, we are going to switch around just a little bit. We're going to put animal protection as the next presenter.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Mr. Young, my name is Tim Clough. I'm the Director of Animal Protection. So what are the principal functions of animal protection? First, it is to respond to all calls of service related to domestic animals 365 days per year. We enforce all of the animal welfare ordinances of Goochlin County and the state of Virginia. We prevent the spread of rabies to humans and domestic animals. And we also operate the Goochlin Animal Shelter and Adoption Center, where we reunite lost pets with their owners and facilitate permanent homes for adoptable animals. Goals and objectives, we continue to provide public safety services while striving to reduce response times. We continue to find forever homes for all adoptable animals entering the animal shelter. We continue to reduce the number of rabies incidents in domestic animals through education, law enforcement, and providing periodic low-cost rabies clinics. And we continue to improve operations in the new Animal Shelter and Adoption Center, focusing on customer service. So calls for service, we continue to see them increase. Even with adding a new officer in fiscal year 2019, the number of calls per officer has remained the same. Animal intake, if you look at this graph, you will see that animal intake dropped some in fiscal years 2019 and 2020, and that was because of space limitations in the temporary shelter. I did something a little bit different this year and added the first quarter of fiscal year 2021. During that first quarter, we took in 217 animals. If this trend continues, we're projected to take in just shy of 900 animals, and that is a 48% increase over the previous year. is a 48% increase over the previous year. So I guess they say if you build it, they will come, and so far, the animals have. Along with that increase in intake, we are seeing an increase in our adoption rate and also our save rate. So save rate are animals that are either adopted, reclaimed, or transferred to one of our partner animal welfare organizations. You'll see that our adoptions did go down in 2019 and 2020. That was again because of being in the temporary animal shelter and the lack of foot traffic to that facility. But because of the strong partnerships that our shelter supervisor and our shelter coordinator have made with regional organizations, we were able to increase that save rate for each of those years. So one of our primary functions is rabies. Office responded to 49 calls for service related to rabies last fiscal year. Thirty-six of them were for wildlife that were displaying active symptoms. Thirteen calls were for domestic animals that had contact with wildlife displaying active symptoms. We had five confirmed cases in Goochlin. Four of those were skunks and one raccoon. That is not an unusual number. That is pretty average for Goochlin County for a positive case year. One thing, because of COVID restrictions, we were unable to host a low-cost rabies clinic this year. We hope to get those back very soon because they're very beneficial to the community to get as many pets vaccinated for rabies as we possibly can. In the recent years, we've seen an increased demand to respond to wildlife calls. Air officers responded to 105 calls for service regarding wildlife, and that is outside of rabies calls. This was just for wildlife. Animal protection will assist with any injured animal. We try to capture the animal, and then if possible, we transport it to a wildlife rehabilitation facility. We do not trap nuisance wildlife. We will go out to the complaint, and we'll work with the homeowner to try to find ways to mitigate the nuisance and what is causing the nuisance. One thing we have developed is in the right, top right side of the slide, that's a card that we have made up now that we give to the citizen. It has information about how we can help, but it also gives contact information for state agencies and also federal fish and wildlife, so that if something that we can't actively help them with, we leave them with some, a number that they can contact someone that will. Under the game department laws in the state of Virginia, we are not allowed to relocate and release wildlife, and that is why we don't trap for citizens. And that's because of disease transmission. You don't want to move one population of raccoons to another population of raccoons. Future outlook: With an increase in residential growth, there is an expected increase in domestic animal populations. Citizens have an increased expectation of compliance with and enforcement of local animal ordinances. And then just some housekeeping. I am so happy to say that we're in our new facility, but with that new facility, of course, we've had to make some changes. We're working right now through our standard operating procedures to have them updated to more matched operations in the new facility. We're really working on an animal ambassador program. That's our volunteer program, and obviously, COVID really restricted us with the number of individuals we could have in the shelter on a daily basis. So we're looking at creative ways to try to get some more of those individuals to help with their operations. And then finalizing the new MOU with Goochlin Pet Lovers, which was done this afternoon. I do have a short video. It is the virtual ribbon cutting and grand opening for the new animal shelter, since we couldn't do that during COVID restrictions. And then after that video, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
This project began as a vision for Goochlin County by then-county Administrator, the late Becky Dixon, along with several concerned and caring community residents. We broke ground on the project August the 1st, 2017, and after several stumbling blocks, I'm pleased to invite you to our newly completed animal shelter. State-of-the-art facility is 13,941 square feet, and at a maximum capacity can hold approximately 32 dogs and 65 cats, along with various other animals as needed. This is a big change from the original building that was 2,100 square feet, that housed approximately 10 dogs and 15 cats. We will take you through the building to the five major areas, including the spay and neuter clinic and the animal intake center, which will both be restricted to the public during daily operations. The project is an innovative public-private partnership between Goochlin County and Goochlin Pet Lovers. Goochlin Pet Lovers raised $1.25 million through the contributions of many generous donors to expand the facility to include an adoption lobby. Goochlin Pet Lovers continues to raise funds for many things such as medical care and training and support of Goochlin County's Animal Protection Department. Our first stop is the Vicki and Paul Saunders Lobby.
Welcome to the Vicki and Paul Saunders Lobby. This is the public space where our customers will come and meet the animals. The lobby is prominent and welcoming, with a reception desk located in plain view from the front door. Staff and volunteers will be available at the reception desk to greet the public entry and to welcome them to the shelter. Seating and pub-style tables are available for members of the public to complete adoption applications and for staff to assist with their adoption contracts.
The volunteer room is located adjacent to the lobby, where volunteers can check in and out and leave their personal items. In addition, we have two real-life rooms, which house available pets which are considered the spotlights of the week. These special animals may be seen from the outside of the building.
Moving counterclockwise around the shelter, the first area on the right is the Flag Spay and Neuter Clinic, which will not be open to the public.
The clinic consists of an exam room, a pre-surgical holding area, and the operating room. The in-house spay-neuter clinic will greatly reduce the cost of surgery and the staff time transporting animals off-site. All animals that meet age requirements will be sterilized prior to adoption.
The new shelter's state-of-the-art design includes a new spay and neuter within the building. The Flag Spay and Neuter Clinic carries the name of the animal rescue group for the love of animals in Goochlin, which closed its doors in 2017, after many years of tireless work rescuing and caring for countless animals.
Next up is the Weinstein Properties Animal Intake Center. The animal protection staff will give you a brief overview of what happens when an animal is brought to the shelter. This is the second area, which will not be open to the public due to the many safety measures in place.
All animals arriving at the facility, whether stray animals or surrendered animals, enter through the sally port at the back of the building. Animals are held at the shelter for a mandated holding period to allow owners the opportunity to reclaim their lost pets. Upon admission to the shelter, animals are evaluated to determine if any immediate veterinary care is needed. The intake center features stratified housing areas that allow animals to be grouped based on evaluation and care needs. The housing areas include dog observation holding, dog isolation, cat observation holding, cat isolation, and feral cat rehabilitation holding. The intake center also houses the pet food preparation room, laundry room, and grooming stations.
Once an animal is deemed ready for adoption, the animal is moved to the Gordonier Family Adoption Lobby, where the public can see all animals available for adoption.
The Gordonier Adoption Lobby houses all pets available for adoption at the animal shelter. The facility is open and welcoming. Expansive windows and skylights allow natural light to come in. The dog kennels and the cat towers allow plenty of space for animals to move around comfortably. Potential adopters may move freely through the facility to view all of the animals for adoption. The Gordonier Adoption Lobby also features three visitation rooms, where families can visit with animals one-on-one in a home-like environment, whether it's rain or shine. Finally, there is a small animal containment unit called the Rascal Room. This holds adoptable pocket pets such as hamsters, guinea pigs, and rabbits.
The Rebecca T. Dixon Leadership Wing houses all the administrative offices for the animal control. It carries the name of Becky Dixon, who was the county administrator from 2009 to 2016, and whose incredible vision and foundational work provided the basis for the public-private partnership. Within the wing is an office containing stations for animal protection officers, the shelter supervisor, the shelter coordinator, and the Director of Animal Protections Office. A spacious conference room and a break room are also located in the leadership wing. This wing allows for the efficient processing of paperwork for animals coming into the shelter, adoption applications, as well as the daily management activities of the shelter and animal control.
Thank you for joining us. We look forward to being able to open our doors soon to visitors, or if you're interested in adopting a new pet or just want to see the facility. Please check the Goochlin County website and Animal Protections Facebook page for further information.
So I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Clough. Any questions, board? I do have one, and I may have received it previously, but the wildlife crisis hotline phone number.
Yes.
Card, would you please share that with us again in an email?
Absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate it. I may have had it, because from time to time, I do get requests from citizens.
Sure.
And give that out to them.
Be glad to.
Okay.
Quick question.
All right, Mr. Lumpkins.
Quick question. I've asked, I know, I've had constituents ask me about response times, and I saw in the beginning of your presentation, it's your goal to continue to improve response times. But then I saw that you said even with an addition of an officer, your, your calls per officer remain the same. So how are you doing on your improving response times?
We're, we're struggling somewhat, and the reason that that call per officer stayed the same was just the general increase in calls overall during that timeframe. So there are times where we're not immediately responding to a call when it comes into dispatch or to our office, and the calls have to be prioritized on a daily basis.
So do you, do you have a plan? Obviously, it seems to me staffing maybe is, or are there other things you're looking at doing?
Staffing and also staffing levels at the shelter that may also free me up to run more calls. With the construction and moving into the new facility, it's taken me off of the road quite a bit. And so myself and our field supervisor, Talia Farrow, and we hope that we will have more time to spend on the road also to help get to those calls quicker.
Sounds good. Well, budget, budget time's coming up soon.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okey-dokey. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Great information. All right. The last of three presentations. Chief Ferguson?
Eddie Ferguson, Fire Rescue Chief. I'm joined here today by Deputy Chief Mike Watkins and also our Medical Director Dustin Anderson. It's a pleasure to be with you today to give a brief update on the Fire Rescue Department for year 2020. So some of the core beliefs and missions of the Fire Rescue Department, we are an all-hazard response agency. We do fire EMS, all the different things that we're presented with throughout the county to respond and meet the needs of our citizens. We try to do so with dignity and respect, and any fire that we can prevent is a good one. And so fire prevention is a big part of what we do, as well as trying to reduce injury and death in our county in other ways as well. Emergency management is a big part of the Fire Rescue Department's responsibility. In fact, we had no idea until this year how important emergency management would actually be to the overall operation of the county and the Fire Rescue Department. We respond to all calls for assistance in the most timely manner that we can, professional manner. We show empathy, compassion, and understanding. We try to do this in a physically responsible, sound manner, respecting citizen investment. We have a very highly skilled and diverse workforce that's composed of both volunteers as well as career members, and they provide exceptional services to our citizens and businesses in the county. We try to perform our tasks as safely and as effectively and efficiently, minimizing the risk to the public as well as the responders. Of course, many of our challenges and the calls that we respond to are emergency scenes, and they don't go without risk to the personnel that respond as well as our citizens. You'll notice that the, the call numbers this year are a little bit behind maybe where we were last year this time. A lot of that is due to COVID. We didn't have any real large weather events this year that would be considered call generators. We didn't have a lot of the large crowd events that we normally have, have had in the past to generate 30, 40 calls for that event. However, what I will tell you is that the Fire Rescue Department, if we do what we did in October, we're probably on track, even with the light call load because of the COVID in the spring, to come close to last year's numbers. October was one of the busiest months on record for the Fire Rescue Department, including ambulance transports. We did about 314 calls in October, so we are certainly going to be making up for lost time. And I think that's an indication as to what you might see in the future years looking ahead. And you can see at the bottom of that slide, there's a breakdown of the types of calls that we, we actually respond to, both fire and EMS. One of the things I know that you're the most proud of, we're proud of this also, is our response time reduction. I'll tell you that staffing those fire stations back in October of 2019 has made a huge difference with the response time. We reduced EMS response times by almost two minutes by just doing that. There are some other benefits to that, too, as, for example, we've had numerous citizens who go directly to the fire station, who may be having a medical emergency, and they're able to be greeted by a crew that's actually there in quarters that can actually meet, meet their needs. It's not just career personnel, it's volunteer personnel, too, because we work together on the same team to get, get the job done. A little bit of trivia at the bottom of the slide, we transport the most patients in Rico Dr. S. Forrest, followed by Second to St. Mary's. And then the Bon Secours Short Pump Emergency Department on Broad Street has become another place that we transport personnel to very frequently. Fire response times are certainly important as well. The personnel that are staffing the station, they're dual-role personnel, they respond to fire and EMS emergencies, they can do all the all-hazards responses that we do as an organization. You can see that those response times are certainly, certainly good as well. I'll tell you that fire doubles in size every 30 seconds. 30 years ago, it was stated that you had 17 minutes to get out of an average house fire. Because of today's construction, the furnishings inside of the home, you're lucky if you have three to four minutes nowadays to safely get out of a house fire. You know, as well as I do, we did see an increase in house fires during the COVID. We attributed that to people that were staying at home, more wear and tear on appliances, and particularly, we saw quite a few porch fires, just as you can see that, that picture in, in the slide. That porch was, was on fire on that home. I'll tell you that we think response times have also reduced the amount of property loss in the county. While this property loss that we show on the slide is definitely significant, and we don't pretend to underestimate the significance of how it affected the individuals that lost property due to fire, I'll tell you that the previous two years, it was up near $3 million. Now, a lot of that property loss is out of our control to some degree, because we, we don't know which fire is going to happen next, or which, which building may, may catch fire. However, I can tell you by getting to those scenes quickly makes, makes a big difference. Mutual aid is something that we, we work well with our regional partners. We give mutual aid, and we also receive mutual aid. And we give you guys a report on that every month so that you are aware of where our resources are going. And this year in particular, because of some of the events that occurred in the city of Richmond and so forth, we had an unprecedented year as far as mutual aid and how we helped our regional partners and how they helped us. Staffing in 2020, all six fire rescue stations are staffed 24/7. We had 19 volunteer members join. We hired fire, five career members. Four of those were full-time employees, and there was one part-time person that was hired. Some of these were filling vacant positions where a member left and went to another organization. Promoted two career lieutenants. COVID-19, though, has had an impact on their volunteer participation. Volunteer participation is down comparatively. However, I'm pleased to see that it's starting to build back. And we're hoping that, that over time, and with the right types of initiatives and so forth, that we can get that back to where it was and maybe, maybe even do better than that. The combination department continues to grow. The career members and volunteers work together to do the job, to serve the citizens, and to deliver the to serve the citizens and to deliver the service at a cost that's cost-effective to our taxpayers. Ambulance staffing is typically two people. Some are very ambulance crews. We may have three people on the crew. But we also focus on fire staffing. It takes more firefighters to go to a fire and perform that function in a safe manner. The goal in Goochlin County is to try to have three firefighters on each fire engine when it goes out the door. We monitor that on a monthly basis. But our real goal, the industry standard, is to get to the point that we actually have four firefighters on each fire engine that goes, responds to a call. And so you can see that with our career members and our volunteer members, we are able to achieve some numbers on our fire engines. We're close to that third firefighter, or that three firefighters. But it's something that we do struggle with, and we try to do the best we can. One thing that we can, we do to make up for that is the number of units that actually respond to a fire. We have multiple units that respond, and collectively and cumulatively, we're able to put those numbers on the fire ground. NFPA 1710 talks about how many firefighters it takes to handle certain types of incidents. 15 members, for example, if you're using an aerial vice to handle a residential structure fire. But the one thing NFPA 1710 misses out on, from our perspective, is rural water supply. Because we don't always have hydrants on every corner, so we have to shuttle our water and bring our water in from other locations. And so it takes many more people in Goochlin to go to a fire in order to meet those water supply demands and needs. And so that is one little bit of deceiving information that I just wanted to mention. Another big part of what the Fire Rescue Department does, as already has been mentioned, is emergency management. And one of the big initiatives besides handling the COVID-19 pandemic is that we are in the process of revising their emergency operations plan. The emergency operations plan has to be revised every four years, according to the code of Virginia, state code of Virginia. And we're due for a revision that's actually going to be taking effect in the spring of 2021. And so we're well down that road. You all have provided us the resources we need with a consulting firm, and we're working on that at the present time. Code red has been used several times in the past year, and we have certainly found that that is an effective way to communicate with our citizens. And we've been able to send out messages and beef attendants up at some of the COVID testing events and also the flu shot clinics and so forth. So emergency management is certainly an active area of the organization. In particular, related to emergency management, COVID-19. I just want to commend and thank the entire county and all of the partnerships in the county, both public and private, local government, on how everyone came together and handled and presently are handling the pandemic. The Goochlin Community Citizens Task Force, the Sheriff's Office, Goochlin Cares. The Central Virginia All-Hazards Incident Management Team was a good move for Goochlin Fire Rescue and Goochlin County so that we could have the best practices shared through our regional planning process. And certainly county schools. And there are many more departments that participate in the Community Citizen Task Force group that I haven't mentioned. Fire marshal activity in 2020. I had indicated there was an increase in structure fires that we saw. Fire Marshal Davies was busy doing fire investigations. However, I know you've heard that the building plans continued to come in and new construction continued forward. And I'd like to commend Fire Marshal Davies for the approach he took in order to get into those businesses in a safe way while they were comfortable with so that we could do fire inspections. In addition to that, Fire Safety, Fire Prevention Week was in October. And it's kind of, the numbers for the public education classes, they're a little bit deceiving, too, because all of the messages that we delivered were actually sent out by video. And so I know we probably contacted many more than 3,000 people by video, but it's just kind of hard to tell. Some recognition that we have in the organization, but I'd like to start with an introduction first. We have Dr. Dustin Anderson, who is our new Medical Director for Goochlin County Fire Rescue in the Goochlin County Sheriff's Office. Dr. Anderson is also the Medical Director for our Emergency Medical Dispatch Program that has been credited with saving so many lives since it was implemented over the past year and a half. I also would like to thank Dr. Ernst, who will be stepping down officially as Medical Director in December 31st, who, Dr. Ernst has been our Medical Director for 20 years. This past year, the department did receive a recognition from the American Heart Association, the Mission Lifeline Award. We did receive, for the first time, a gold Mission Lifeline Award. And this is basically our response to cardiovascular emergencies, heart attacks and strokes. The ability to deliver that care, 12 lead EKGs, electrocardiograms, and sending those ahead to the hospital so that the cath lab is open so that those patients get the type of care they need in a timely manner. Sheriff Creasy had indicated that Mrs. Tammy Witt, Communication Supervisor, had received an award, and she did. It was actually Monday night. So we had to modify this presentation just a day or so ago. But congratulations to Tammy Witt, our Communications Supervisor, who received the ODMSA Regional EMS Award for Outstanding Contribution to EMS Telecommunications. Now, I'll tell you that ODMSA is a large area. It's four state planning districts. Emporia, Farmville, it comes this direction. So there was a lot of competition for this. So certainly Tammy is well-deserving of this type of recognition. Below Tammy, we have Adam Alfred. Adam Alfred is one of our volunteer members. He's a captain at Company Five. He manages the rescue squad there at Station Five. And Adam was also recommended, recognized with an award that same evening as Outstanding Pre-Hospital Educator. Adam works at VCU, Center for Trauma and Critical Care Education, and teaches those paramedic classes. So we're really proud of both Adam and Tammy for their accomplishments that were awarded this week. These two individuals actually go on to compete with other award winners across the state to compete for the Governor's Award. Recent accomplishments, there have been so many, and we appreciate your support to be able to do these. The air packs, the breathing apparatus in the top picture has just been huge for us. It's a huge health and safety initiative where we implemented this back in the spring. There's not anything I can think of that is probably more important to the health and safety of our firefighters than having the right type of breathing apparatus so we are not breathing smoke and carcinogens and so forth. The types of cleaning equipment that you made possible to us, the sterilizers, the UVA light sterilizers, all of the protective equipment that we've been able to have and use during this COVID-19 pandemic. And all of the other things that go along with accomplishments, like a new ambulance that went to Company Three, and hydraulic rescue tools and turnout gear. And the list just goes on. Too many things to mention, and I'll put on a slide. So thank you very much for that type of support. One thing I will just spend a little bit of time on are dry hydrants. We have made a lot of headway with dry hydrants since our last talk to you about that. We had about 79 or 80 dry hydrants going into this. And if you recall, many of them, over the course of 20 to 30 years, needed repairs. And we've been able to repair 55 of these dry hydrants, and they have been put back in tip-top shape, working condition. We did this through the use of a vendor that had a diver, went in the water, made repairs underwater, as well as those repairs that were needed on the ground at the ponds. And landowners, a special thanks to the County Attorney's Office, who helped us with our right-of-entry agreements. We have new files in place. And we're still working on this project. We're not done. There are about 10 more dry hydrants out there that are scheduled for repairs. And we're hoping to actually bring a couple back that were not in service prior to this project. Now, you may see some were removed from service. Some of the dry hydrants over the years just got to the point where access was impeded because the area got overgrown or the water actually encompassed the pipe that was out of the ground. So we did, we have abandoned some of those, but not to the point where we feel like it's going to be a huge detriment to fire protection across the county. We appreciate all private landowners who let us have dry hydrants on their property. Training is coming back. We're doing as much training as we can in person. Just this past couple of weeks, we actually had the Virginia Department of Fire Programs Mobile Burn Trailer set up down at the West Creek Emergency Department in the parking lot. We had all, 80 firefighters actually come through that for training. There were 35 live burn scenarios, about 80 firefighters attended, and it represented three fire departments. We had, of course, Goochlin County Fire Rescue was there. Hanover Fire EMS joined us, as well as DuPont Fire and EMS Department in Chesterfield County came up and ran their members through the training. EMS training is coming back as well. We're hoping to have an EMT class that will start shortly after the first of the year. I certainly wanted just to mention all of the new apparatus that we have on order, and thank you for that. We have a new ambulance on order, a ladder truck that's due to be delivered in the late spring. The tanker at the bottom of the slide, the tanker is supposed to be delivered in December, and the tanker is going to Company Five. And then we have recently ordered a new boat for Company One for the James River, for our water rescue team. The boat is actually identical to a boat we already have at Station Four. So I want to thank you for that. So it takes the whole fire rescue team to get the job done and to meet the mission of the Fire Rescue Department. And the Volunteer Fire Rescue Association Incorporated, they do their share of work, too, and they make a lot of investments into the organization. These are some examples of some of the investments that the Fire Rescue Association has made. The picture actually shows the bay doors on the front of Manikin Company One that were actually raised and enlarged with new bay doors so that those doors will accommodate the height of the new ladder truck. And this is a great example of that Department-City Volunteer Association cooperation that we have with our volunteers. The Volunteer Association engages in fundraising across the county. We're supported very well by our citizens. And that money is invested right back into the Fire Rescue Department and particularly into the facilities. And so we want to recognize them for their contribution. Kind of like the Sheriff's Office, Fire Rescue is involved regionally. There are many stakeholder groups, both regionally and state, that we all participate in. It gets a little tough sometimes to juggle all the meetings, but I'll tell you that because of our involvement in these groups, it opens many doors and opportunities to the Fire Rescue Department that we can bring information and resources back here to Goochlin County. Some of the challenges and opportunities looking ahead, of course, continue to respond to the increased demand of the growth and development in the county. Staffing, we're looking at not only recruitment but also retention. And that's not only volunteer, it's career and volunteer. Health and safety continues to be on our radar. We worry about cancer and how it affects the fire service, as well as mental health, the way it affects public safety. The apparatus fleet, certainly we have a large fleet. Our vehicles are very expensive, and we invest a lot of money on an annual basis to maintain those vehicles. And both our ambulances and our fire engines can present some challenges at different times. The Fire Rescue Training Center. The Fire Rescue Training Center was opened new in October of 1981. The building that we have burned in all these years for live fire training needs some repairs. And so we're working through that at the present time to determine the condition of that building and is it worthy of an investment. That building was built new in 1981 and received much extensive use over the years. So we're looking at the Fire Rescue Training Center way to develop and grow the department. And with that, I would just like to thank you and all of our citizens. We feel like that we're so grateful for our caring and supportive community. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you, Chief, very much. Board, questions?
Madam Chair, I had a couple.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the dry hydrants, it looks like we did a lot of work. Did we see any benefit? Were we able to, did we rely on any of them this year for some of our incidents?
We have. There have been, several of the fires that we've had, we've used dry hydrants. One of the most recent examples, there was a fire in the western end of the county, and we actually used the dry hydrant in Windsor Lake off of Broad Street to get the water to take over to County Line Road. So yes, sir, every structure fire that we respond to, some officer or firefighter on the way to that fire identifies the nearest water source. And many times, and probably most of the time, it is a dry hydrant. So yes, sir, we are using those. Don't like to say we're using them because that means we're having fires, but it's certainly nice to know that we have those.
I know when you came and spoke to our HOA, and our citizens are very concerned with not having a fire station in District Two. And I think the conversation about where the dry hydrants were put a lot of minds at ease. It has been not at ease for a long time. That neighborhood's been there a long time. People walked out of there feeling really great. I just wonder, with the 10 more to go, with the budget season coming up, like Mr. Lumpkin said earlier, maybe that's something we should look at because it helps with, it's not necessarily response time, but time to containment, I'm sure you measure as well.
Well, I appreciate that. And I just want to reassure you, though, that the funding that you granted us for FY '21 is adequate to cover that. We also reached out to the Virginia Department of Forestry, and we have six dry hydrants that we applied for grants. They allowed us to apply for six of them. And so we're hoping that the Department of Forestry is going to fix those and relieve our budget of those type of repairs. But I do appreciate that. I think we're good on the funding. We have enough to continue. It's just a matter of getting those lined up. The vendor is ready to go. And one thing I failed to mention about some of the ones that we abandoned, some of the ones that we abandoned now have municipal fire hydrants in that area. It's just the way the county has grown over the years, particularly the east. And Fire Station Three is an example. We have a cistern in the backyard of Fire Station Three, but now there's a fire hydrant in the parking lot. So a lot of the improvements in the Tucko Creek Water Service District has helped bring fire hydrants to the area, and we don't rely on those dry hydrants in those areas nearly as much.
Great. I have one more question, if you may, Madam Chair. Completely different subject. With COVID and the schools being closed, are you, I know the county went through a lot of effort to put up hotspots at the fire stations. Are you seeing increased traffic, citizens showing up there to utilize them?
Well, that's another good question. We are. In fact, throughout this entire spring and the pandemic, we have had a lot of traffic through the fire stations. People taking advantage of the internet hotspot. In fact, during Election Day yesterday, I had a conversation with one gentleman that was at Fire Station Four. I think he voted, and then I think he went right out and got in his truck, and he continued to use the internet. And he told me how valuable that had been to he and his family throughout all of this. So yes, sir, we haven't had any issues with that. All of the citizens that are using the internet signal, they're respectful of the fire station, the areas that we have identified to park in. And it's been a really good thing for our county, and we're happy to be a part of that.
And are we running out and putting volunteer here flyers in their winter wipers while they're there?
Well, you know, it's just like, it's just like when we open up a new class and we've got people from the outside, I usually have all of our members in the class raise their hand. And that's, they are the recruiters for that group of people. So I'm thinking that anyone that comes on their property, if one, they're going to make sure they have a right to be there, and they're supposed to be there. And then we usually have that conversation about, do you want to be a volunteer in Goochlin County? So, good point.
That's good. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, I thank you, Chief. Okay. All righty. So the next item on our agenda is appointments. There are none that I'm aware of. Anyone? Nope. Okay, good answer. The last item in the new business is a closed meeting, if any, and there is none. So therefore, if there's no other business for this afternoon, we will come to the close of our 2:00 session and go on our dinner break until 6:00 PM. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Call to order, the 6:00 PM meeting of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors, November 4th, 2020. Thank you all for being here tonight. First order of business is usually the citizen comment. But I'd like to insert, we had mentioned at the 2:00 session today that we do have some results on voting in Goochlin County yesterday. And Mr. Lind was not able to attend our meeting because he was at the provisional ballot hearing. But he did send some information. I believe Mr. Young will provide that to us.
Sure, I'll be happy to do that, Chair. I will be able to do it in his fine, southern dialect, but I'll do the best I can. The Electoral Board has recessed until 1:00 PM on Friday, when they will resume the canvas of ballots that will return to precinct drop boxes on November 3rd and received by mail before noon on Friday, or the ballots remaining in the central absentee precinct, which must be counted by hand. He asks that I share with you the unofficial, incomplete, and uncertain... He asked that I share with you the unofficial, incomplete, and uncertified results. At least three precincts exceeded 85% turnout of active voters. 7,984 voted in person before the election. 2,726 voted by mail. 6,137 voted in their precincts on Election Day. Forty-eight provisional ballots were adjudicated, and 36 were accepted. 16,847 ballots have been cast as of 11/4/2020, with more to come. They're looking at about an 85.8% at this point. They had an unprecedented number of officers of election deployed, including extraordinary service from a number of employees who've been deployed to the satellite location for the last 45 days since September the 18th. And so they'd like to extend their appreciation for those efforts. And with that is all.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. All righty. Next order of business is citizen comment period. If you'd like to open a citizen comment period, anyone would like to make a comment, anything to do with the county, other than what's on the agenda tonight, you'll get an opportunity to speak on these specific items. If you have any other comments, please come forward, give us your name, your address, and please keep your comments to about three minutes. No? You're good. Okay. I don't know. Is there no one else? No one would like to speak? Okay, so seeing none, we'll close the citizen comment period. All right, so our first public hearing tonight, first public hearing will be to consider fiscal year 2021 budget amendments. Ms. Horlacher, I believe, will lead us through this discussion.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Barbara Horlacher, Director of Financial Services. Tonight, we are having a public hearing for FY21 budget amendments. Per the state code, if your total of your amendments increases your budget by more than 1% of the total expenditures in the currently adopted budget, it requires a public hearing. So the PowerPoint will pretty much follow down the schedule that's in your agenda packet, and it will add a little bit to the project description. The projects are grouped by the source of funding, so we talk about where do the funds come from to pay for these things that we are adding back into the budget. So the first category is we are adding back two positions. Those two positions are funded by an increase in the FY21, the current budget, operating revenues. In this case, we chose to increase FY21 real estate taxes. So an increase in those taxes will support this as it's an ongoing expense. So we would increase the budget by $63,734, and that would be to add a full-time transportation engineer to the planning staff effective November 5th. Now, the annual cost of that position will be $110,000, including salary and benefits, and that would be built into the FY22 budget, as this is an ongoing expense. $10,000 to procure software to publish the annual budget book. This would, this software would consolidate all our numbers that we get from our financial system. We would send the spreadsheet, and then the different department pages would automatically populate into this budget book, hopefully getting a more transparent and the big thing is a quicker turnaround on our budget book. So those two items come from FY21 real estate taxes. The next item would come from FY21 utility fees. So again, this is a recurring expense. FY21 utility fees are recurring revenues. This would be $31,100 to add a full-time utility customer service agent effective November 5th. The annual cost of that position is approximately $50,000 and would be, again, built into the FY22 budget and supported by utility fees, water and sewer rates that we collect on a bi-monthly basis. The next category is a Special Cares Act for registrars in the state of Virginia. Registrars were given, depending on the size of your locality, were given an amount to cover the increase of expenses, as Mr. Young just talked about, of satellite operations, personnel, more printing, more postage. Our registrar's office received $49,480 in that CARES money from the state. Well, it's federal money, but it came via the state. Okay, now, this next project is East End Trails. East End Trails was originally started way back in FY16, put on the books at that point. This, what we're talking about here is the first phase of this project, which would be a mile and a half-long trail, and it would be located close to the HCA medical facility on Tuckahoe Creek Parkway. We've been analyzing and studying and doing some studies to prepare for this, and we're now at the point where we do have a cost estimate for construction of this project. So the cost for design and construction of a 10-foot-wide asphalt trail is currently estimated at $733,000, approximately $1,000. And that includes a VDOT management fee, because there's three sources of revenue for this project. The one is a VDOT grant, and VDOT, when they give this type of grant, they also charge a management fee. So it would be approximately a $30,000 management fee to accept $200,000 in funding. So the three sources would be proffers, park proffers specifically, there's a VDOT grant that I told you about, and general fund assigned fund balance to, we hope, be offset with future proffers if received. We are receiving proffers, and in this case, we can use proffers from both the east end and what we before called general proffers. We call them old proffers, but they're all specifically for parks, but they can be used at any place in the county. So $393,280 is the current amount we have in parks' proffers currently collected, and of course, we are continuing to collect proffers as we go along. I mentioned to you that the second source of funding for this would be the $200,000 that is a transportation, an alternative transportation grant through VDOT. It's actually federal money, but it comes through VDOT. And then that leaves the next category of funding, which is general fund assigned fund balance. And at this point, it would be, we're asking for $140,000 just to complete the project and say that we have all the funds for it. It could be that at the time that we actually get to construction of the project, we are able to come back and say, we don't need $140,000 because we have collected more in proffer money. So we're now into general fund assigned fund balance. There is an amount set aside called future CIP projects, and that's where this $140,000 would come from. As well as the next item, $700,000. This is the cost to purchase a new ambulance and to rechassis two older ambulances with high mileage. So the cost of a new ambulance is approximately $300,000. To rechassis two older ambulances, approximately $200,000 each. And this would put the fire department in good standing in terms of their ambulance inventory. They will continue to replace ambulances in the CIP, and we will plan that out and present that to you with the CIP when we get to that point of the budget. A few more things from the general fund assigned fund balance. $160,000, we're going to have to relocate the sports field. I think a little bit later, you're going to talk about the Fairground Road Roundabout. It's going to take away that sports field that's now located down there at the intersection of Fairground Road and Sandy Hook. We, there's currently $200,000 sitting there, ready to be used for that project, but that was two years ago, I believe, when we started that project as well, and costs have changed. The estimate now to do that project is $360,000. So we would be asking for another $160,000 to complete that project. We'd like to start that project so that the field can be totally relocated by the time they begin the roundabout project. And the last item that would come from that general fund assigned fund balance is $105,000 for a bus that was originally in the FY21 CIP, but when we made the different cuts due to the pandemic, this bus was removed from that. So those last several items, starting with the trails, the ambulance, the central fields, Central High Field, and the 105 for the bus, would all come from that general fund assigned fund balance. And then the schools is asking to amend the budget for their turnback money, $616,556, which again is assigned specifically as schools turn back and was approved for the June 30th fund balance. The remainder of the items come from various sources. These are all school items. There are various grants that are available to the schools, so the Education Foundation Grant, some Virginia Department of Education grants. The attached to your agenda item is an explanation from the schools of how they intend to use those various funds. The $440,000 is from CRF funds, not ours, but the ones that came specifically through the Virginia Department of Education. Another 120 grant for elementary school education relief. And these grants, some of them have to be spent before December 30th, and some of them can be spent after December 30th. And of course, the schools are here to explain any of those. And $23,000 is just an increased amount they are receiving from the federal government for the special education award, and then some money from the Governor's Relief Fund to fund cafeteria losses that the schools experienced in the March through June time period, when they were not in school. And before the public hearing, I will take any questions, or there are some members of the audience that can answer questions on any of those projects as well.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Horlacher. Board, any questions at this point?
Just one point of clarification. For the ambulances, the new ambulance, you said it was $300,000, and the rechassis, that's really getting brand-new engines and all the things that may go. We're just taking the box, the shells, and putting them on top. Is that correct?
That's correct. I was going to use the word "the box," and Chief Ferguson in here is as well, but that is it replacing the drive shaft and all those items.
Perfect, thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Horlacher, I do have one, and I apologize for not following exactly. On the East End Trail.
Yes.
Okay, we're looking for $733,000. $200 is coming from grants.
Correct.
How much from proffers?
$393,280.
Could you be more specific? No kidding.
That's how much we had at the time this was done.
And that is all eligible proffers for this project?
Correct.
Okay. And so $200,393,280, and then therefore, $140,000 would be from the general fund if approved. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to be sure I hit that right. Thank you. All right, seeing no further questions from the board, we'll open a public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on these budget amendments? Please come forward, give us your name, your address, keep it to three minutes. No, no, okay. One, two, three. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. All right, Board, any other questions or comments, considerations? Someone like to make a motion?
There is a motion. Available if you would like to use it.
Madam Chair, I move that the Gutsland County Board of Supervisors approve the amendments to the Gutsland County Fiscal Year 2021 budget, a total amount of $3,237,475 for the event of identified projects and amounts.
Just for clarification, if you could also have appropriate as part of that motion?
It's the amendment's end.
I'd very much like to appropriate those.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Spoonhour. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion. Mr. Young, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Chair Laskolet?
Yes. All right. So that passes. All right, the second.
Thank you, Dr. Raely.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for what you're doing. Okay, so the next item is Amendment of Chapter Six.
Thank you, Debbie. Excuse me.
Here, you want this? Okay, so the next public hearing, the next public hearing is Amendment of Chapter Six of the county's 2035 Comprehensive Plan Public Facilities. And I believe, who will be presenting? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jessica Kronberg. I'm the Recreation Services Director here for Parks and Recreation, and tonight I have the pleasure of presenting the proposed amendments to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I'd like to start by giving you some background on the proposal and process while touching on the facility inventory and highlights. I'll discuss the 2016 plan before moving into the amendments. The 2016 to 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan is set to expire this year. Parks and Recreation staff, with the support of the Recreation Advisory Commission, are recommending to amend and extend the current master plan to 2023. This would allow the next update to include updated census data and would coincide with the updated comprehensive plan. This was a targeted update, and the following sections of the master plan have been updated: the Parks and Rec Report Card, the County Characteristics and Demographics, the Needs Assessment, and the Inventory of Existing Facilities. In your packet, I would say they're in red, but I actually think they're just going to be in a little lighter gray, because you guys have it in black and white there. So anything that's been updated is shown that way in your packet. During the October 1st meeting, the Planning Commission voted 4-0 in favor of amending the master plan as recommended. Our facility inventories and inventory amenities have changed since 2016. The department currently has eight facilities. As you can see, some of our highlights include historical, environmental, agricultural amenities, top-quality athletic complexes, James River access, and an expansive trail system. It is important to note that over the past eight years, our partnerships with local groups, grants, and in-kind services have saved the county over $1.4 million in park and facility development costs. Also, our facilities have been recognized multiple times by local and state entities for excellence. Various projects were identified in the 2016 master plan. The following facility development goals have been met, including additional playgrounds, trails, drainage improvements, and lighting improvements, as well as an additional park. As you can see, many of our projects were completed through partnerships or donations. When developing the original plan, Parks and Recreation worked to identify the recommendations below based on citizen feedback and our levels of service deficits. Over the past few years, we addressed the following deficits: playgrounds, nature trails, picnic areas, multipurpose fields, and a senior center at Central High and gymnasium space. Even with those efforts, we're still deficit in playgrounds. You can see there, we are deficit 12 playgrounds, nine equestrian, nine miles of equestrian trails, outdoor basketball courts, tennis courts, and, as I'm sure you are all aware, an eastern recreation facility. As the amended 2020, 2023- As the amended 2020-2023 plan identifies improvements at the following facilities: this includes irrigating fields at Hidden Rock and Central High, playground install, shelter, and trail construction at Central High, relocating the field at 522 and Fairgrounds intersection that Barbara mentioned earlier, and Phase 1 of the East End Trails, as well as the design of an East End Park. As part of the 25-year Public Facilities Master Plan, there were projects identified for the following facilities. However, they were identified for funding beyond 2023. We have various regional district and community parks. Just in case you're not aware, community parks are your smaller, moving up to your districts, and then regional are your largest overall typically. This project will ensure proper maintenance of aging infrastructure and that the department is continuing to meet our deficits and citizen requests, such as playground expansions, installs, and trails. I'm proud to say that all identified recreation programming goals are being met. Examples of these include offering programs at non-parks and recreation facilities at the eastern and western ends of the county, in-house adult sports, such as our adult basketball league, self-directed programming, which is our Active GBA initiative. Moving forward, our goals are to continue to meet the growing need for senior programming, increasing our presence in eastern Goochlin, and working with the Agricultural Center to offer educational programs, as well as continuing our work with local nonprofits such as the Goochlin Community Theater. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Ms. Kronberg, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the board at this point? Let y'all easy right now. Thank you. All right. So we will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this amendment? Please come forward. Y'all just make it easy tonight, right? All right. I'm seeing, I'm seeing none. All right. We will close the public hearing with no comments. All right. Board, any comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the plan as amended and presented this evening by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay. All right.
Second.
All right. Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. If there are no further questions, comments, Mr. Youngman, we have a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
Supervisor Spooner?
Yes.
Chair Laskolet?
Yes. Okay. We have approval. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item is a public hearing to consider donation of land to Virginia Department of Transportation for use of Rightofway, Fairground Road and Sandy Hook Road. And that will be Mr. Kilduff.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Young, I'm Todd Kilduff, Deputy County Administrator for Community and Economic Development. Before I begin the presentation, I just wanted to recognize we have three Virginia Department of Transportation employees here with us tonight that if there's any questions after the presentation that I can't answer, they can hopefully answer. But we do have Mr. Tony Haverly in the back. He's actually the project manager for VDOT. We have Andrea Miller, who's with the Rightofway Division. She's actually kind of walked, walked me hand-in-hand through this entire process, to be completely honest, with Callie's help. And then Nico Ambrose in the back, who's also with VDOT as well. So I'm glad they were able to make it here this evening. So the actual presentation we have for you this evening, it's a public hearing for the Fairground Road-Sandy Hook intersection, which we've been talking about for a while. It's a roundabout project. It's with the Rightofway donation and related easements. And instead of just hopping directly into that for the benefit of some of our citizens who may not know about this project, or those listening at home that may not know about the project, we thought it'd be in the vein of transparency to go a little bit into the background of what the project actually is, real quick, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So the project has been on our books since about 2007. That's when it was really identified as an actual plan that the county needed. In 2013, the project was added to our secondary six-year plan program, and I have an image there showing exactly where it is, and it's actually right behind this building by the BP gas station. In 2017, around August 2017, we actually held a community meeting with all of our citizens, getting their feedback on which option they would prefer. There was a roundabout option, there was traffic signals and a few other things. But based on the citizen feedback, the Board of Supervisors in 2017 approved the roundabout option. Shortly thereafter, the Virginia Department of Transportation began the first phase of the project, which was the engineering. They actually have three phases: engineering, right-of-way, and construction. So right now, we're sort of in the right-of-way phase. So as you see there, 2019 to 2020, the last bullet point, VDOT has begun the right-of-way acquisition for all the land. It's not just the county land. As you can see, Taylor's property is the BP gas station. They've actually completed that. That's over, and they can correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but I believe everything's already been recorded and finalized. I can't say the name of the second one, but it is the Rocco Pizza land. There's this little piece on the front end there, and the Town and Country Shops, which is where EQUOTI Restaurant, China King, Los Panchos, that little, little country store right there, that's, that's actually complete as well. So really, the fourth piece of the puzzle is the county-owned property, which actually requires a public hearing. Just to refresh your memory, in July, just a few months ago of this year, there's a tiny piece of the school board property that is needed for the right-of-way. But the schools are not allowed to actually give land to VDOT. They actually give it to the locality, the local government, and then the local government can then give it to VDOT. So in July of 2020, the school board actually transferred a tiny little piece. I think the highlight is even bigger than the actual piece of land there, but it was 0.06 acres. So a really tiny piece that was actually needed from the school board, but we are in possession of that as the county. And just some good updates is the project so far is still on track. We've always been talking about an early advertisement date of 2022, and so far, we're still on track for that. That's just advertisement for contractors to bid on the project so we can actually do the construction of it. And just a quick refresher on the funding, that's about $3.7 million from the secondary six-year plan. And there is a small, what we've always called the stub road, quote-unquote, is actually an extra little section behind the BP gas station that the county's paying for to add a second entrance on the backside of the BP gas station, because this project actually is taking one of their entrances from the Sandy Hook side, so we're adding an entrance, and it could open up the land in the back and also the county-owned property. So we deem that necessary. So now it costs about $455,000 for a total project cost to date of about $4.1 million. So that's just a real quick history lesson on the project itself. The reason we're here tonight is for the actual right-of-way. In your board packet, you will see these three sheets. There's actually three sheets that are up there that you can see. There's a lot of detail on them, a lot of information, and we felt, hey, instead of sifting through the board packet and trying to tape the three plans together and try and figure out what was what, we actually inserted them and added the aerial image behind it. So it hopefully made a little more sense on what was where and what was being asked for. So, and we did highlight in red right there the actual land that VDOT needs for the project as the donation. So there's three sections from the county. I did not highlight anything for the BP gas station that, again, that's not our right-of-way. I didn't want to add too much more to this image. But there are also easements associated with this. There, and that's actually in the sheets in the board packet as well. But again, there's just a lot of information. But to sift through it, just know that there's temporary construction easements, and as soon as construction is complete, those go away. There are stormwater easements, and that's for all the stormwater that needs, that's needed for the actual extension itself, and, oh, sorry, the roundabout itself. So there's going to be some storm drain pipes and what we call outfalls, where the water actually goes to, and it hits riprap, just big rock, and that actually goes out to the local streams and creeks and things. And there is also sign easements. So there's going to be signage easements as well. So just a few easements associated with the right-of-way, but that, just wanted to make sure it's clear that there is a difference between the two, the right-of-way and the Now, we actually did create some other sheets, which I actually technically have after the question section, that takes each of those three sheets and blows them up a little bit more and adds a little bit more detail. So if you would like to see Sheet 1, the one on the far left there that goes by the BP gas station, blown up a little bit more with the red highlight and some of the easements, I'm happy to scan to those if you would like to see them, but they're after the question So Virginia Code, Section 15.2-1800, actually requires a public hearing. We can't just give the land to VDOT. It's county-owned property, so we actually have to have a public hearing for it. And just as a side note, a very similar presentation to this one will be given once the actual second project, not this project, but a second project, which we're calling the Fairground Road Extension, which actually takes the roundabout and continues it all the way behind this building, or and connects it actually to River Road. There will also be need to be right-of-way and easements for that project as well. So basically, everything you've seen tonight, same recipe, different ingredients for a different project, but that'll be at some point in the near future. So there's a lot going on with this motion, but this is something new that we've added to the presentations and to the agenda packets, but this presentation, or sorry, this, this motion is actually in the agenda packet as well, but it's also up on the screen. And the next slide is questions, but I'll go back to the motion. If there's any questions you have, I'm happy to answer them, if there's something I can't answer. Again, we do have some VDOT personnel here to help.
Okay. Mr. Kilduff, here we go. Any questions from the board at this point? Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Madam Chair, thank you. Todd, could you go back to the donation slide? And you mentioned you have additional slides that may give us a little closer view.
Yes.
My question pertains to what I think is a drain field. At the completion of this project, I believe right now the county owns three of these corners?
That's correct.
The property on three, three of the corners?
Yeah, the northeast, southeast, and southwest.
Okay. And this will be a four-way intersection at the center of town. This will be reasonably prime economic development kind of properties once this is done. So my question really pertains to whether or not, and if and to what extent, that drain field can or cannot be, can support improvements above it, will be in the way of the commercial development of that corner? You know, would it impinge on our ability? Because, just as a layperson, but my impression is you can kind of move those things around a little bit if you needed to. You could put perforated pipes, you could put extensions, you could do a lot of different things with it. And I guess the first question is, why was it put there, and does it get in the way of commercial development? And if so, can it be moved and those kind of things?
Right. I mean, it can always be moved at some point in the future, but we would have to redo all the easements associated with it. But I think the answer to the question is that they are strategically placed in low-lying areas where the, where the stormwater would naturally run anyway, which would be unbuildable land. Like, you wouldn't want to build on the land where these things are in the first place. So does that answer the question? Like, they are strategically placed based on where the actual intersection is.
I guess, so what I'm hearing is where that's positioned on this map is more or less a flood zone or an area that you couldn't build on.
Right. It would be in a floodway or a floodplain or something like that. I don't know off the top of my head that particular one, but I do know there's also one on the other side. If you look, you'll see a very similar image on the southeast side.
Same question to that one.
Yep. Yeah, they're in the low-lying areas where you wouldn't be building anyway.
Yes, sir. The question, the concern is you're taking up a lot of the commercial space on the four corners of the downtown area.
That's right.
Maybe VDOT, one of the engineers could address that better, or is that?
Tony, any further insight onto that? If you wouldn't mind, come on up.
So I guess the question is, if you owned all this land, would you put those things where they are?
Good evening. Tony Haverly, VDOT project manager. So I don't have my design team here, but we did work, oh, sorry. We did work closely, you know, with Mr. Kilduff, you know, gave proposed locations for these drain fields. And yeah, it's always, I guess, you know, there's always a lot of, you know, looking at different options, what works best. And, you know, we do have to handle the drainage. We thought this was the, you know, the best location for them. I, you know, like Mr. Kilduff saying, is this is where it's naturally the low spot. And if this, I know, I understand what you're saying, that this is a prime real estate location. You know, we didn't look at many other options. If you want us to look at other options to mitigate the, you know, the drain field area, we can do that. But yeah, off the top of my head, yep, this, I mean, this might have been brought up earlier, but you know, it's a good point, and we can, we can look at it again. But yeah, I just don't have my hydraulics engineer here to answer that.
I appreciate the honesty. If you don't know the answer, don't, don't try and guess. I appreciate that. Yeah, I would have brought it up sooner. This is the first time I'm seeing this. But the, at this point, is it, is it possible to explore other alternatives that might be less invasive or might permit more, you know, better access to developmental opportunities? Or is, is this something that, I mean, I, once it's all said and done, this is going to create a, you know, prime economic development area, and I wouldn't want to say, well, jeez, we, we shouldn't have put those right there because they're in the way, kind of thing. There's, I'm guessing the design folks look at it and go, what would be the fastest, easiest, cheapest, best way to, and boom. But if you looked at it through the lens of, but if I'm going to use this for something productive going forward, would that change my lens that I'm looking through to view this property? Do you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah. Would you like options to make it smaller to reduce and, I mean, our hydraulics guys?
Yeah. And also, Mr. Peterson, in that particular location, I'm going to use a little laser light on the screen here. This whole area right here is like the swampy area, where there's actually like little boardwalks that the school has that you have to cross across. Like, this area right here is not really buildable anyway, and you can see the proximity to the parking lot right here. There's really not a lot of space. The main economic areas that we were looking at was the old bus garage site on this side, and then all of this land that extends over here. That was really the main focus of putting the extension in, and that's the, that's the land that we were trying to open up. This is just, it's really not good land to build on at all. I mean, it's really swampy back in here with the stream and everything, right behind the, the track for the elementary school. So, yeah, but right here, there's really not a lot of space.
Put that, I mean, we got, we have improvements here now. I mean, it's a battlefield, but.
Right, right.
You could just, it's as simple as extending this out a little further to preserve all of this. Again, this side, a little more problematic, this is right there. Again, I don't know if it, if you just back it off of the main roads at all, or if that's even just extending it somewhat so that you, you know, preserve the maximum opportunities or at least don't cut off.
Maximize the area. Yes, sir. And it sounds like from what VDOT's saying is they're definitely willing to continue to look at the actual drainage locations and extend them if need be, if that's what it takes. So we can definitely look a little further into that. Not a problem.
Yes, sir.
You mean, have you have any problem with the roundabout? I don't have any problem with us, you know, facilitating the construction with the, but I just want to do it in a way that makes sense.
Yes, sir.
Okay. When I say I don't have any problem, just take that under advisement.
I understand. Yes, sir. But I'm happy to hear that VDOT's willing to look at it further.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Any other comments or questions? I do, Mr. Kilduff. So we are donating 1.03 acres. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What's the value of that land?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
All right. So we're spending $160,000 to relocate the ball field. What was it, 445 for the stub road?
And I'm sorry, let me take a step back. Andrea, have you guys, did you look at the price of the land and what it was and what's actually being donated? I'm sorry, I may, shouldn't have spoken too soon. They may have looked at that.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you, Andrea.
So typically, when we have, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Typically, when, during the preliminary stages of design, we would go to the county and we would decide whether or not it was going to be a donation. So this was kind of something that was decided a couple of years ago, right? So when we come to the right-of-way stage, we don't actually, when we have knowledge that it's going to be a donation most likely, we don't actually go ahead and do the valuation because there is a document that we provide to the county that waives the right to evaluation in donation cases.
So that's the process that you go through? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I guess what I'm trying to determine here is how much is, how much is this costing the county? We're losing land, we're locating ball field, we've got the stub road, we had talked about putting special lighting in here. I'm just trying to get a sense of how much this is costing the county to do this project out of our funds.
Well, I can tell you with the land that's outlined in red, that's the land in Fee, in Fee Simple, that would be conveyed. Most of that is already roadway, so it would not actually have much value.
For development?
Yes, for development purposes. So the valuation would be minimal on most of that land.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay. Any other questions at this point before the public hearing?
I would not see, quickly see your slides after the, just maybe touch on them. I think you said you had some slides after the question slide.
Yeah, so basically, what we did is the, the three sheets that are in your board packet, again, they have a lot of info. So what we tried to do, and actually with Andrea's help, we basically just wanted to highlight just the right-of-way and the easement. So I'm just warning, there's still a lot of information on them. So this is the first sheet on the far left, this goes behind the BP gas station. So again, it's just a blown-up version of the donation, and it actually goes in a little more detail showing the construction easement and the drainage easement itself. And some of these overlap, so we didn't want to overlap the colors, just to let you know. So, we moved these to the end just because it was still a little confusing, there's still a lot of information on there. There's road stationings, there's bearings and northings and eastings and all this other fancy engineering terminology on there. But that's basically what you see.
And there's no sidewalk, there's not going to be any sidewalk, crosswalk?
There are sidewalks on this, yeah, just not on this image.
Oh, not on this.
Yeah, there will be sidewalks, yes, sir. And moving to what we're calling Sheet Two, which is sort of the middle roundabout section. Again, there's a lot of information, but just showing you the donation. The next slide is the same image, but it has just the easements on it. So again, you can see if we actually showed these and have them overlaid, it would just be, it'd be very difficult to discern what was what on each sheet. And I'm happy to go back to just the donation sheet if you'd like.
No, this is good, this is helpful.
Okay, good. Well, I'm glad we did.
Second drainage easement on the right, is that?
On the, the one you were pointing to originally is on the left there, and the next, well, actually, let me skip forward two sheets. This sheet is on the far right where the fire station is in the upper right corner there. And you see a little bit of donation, the other drainage easement, and a temporary construction easement as well. And if you need me to go back to any of those, I'm happy to.
So, Mr. Kilduff, the easements from the private property owner, which we're identifying here, I guess is the BP station, that has been completed in a fair market transaction? There's, there's no imminent taking, or it was strictly in agreement with the property owner, is that correct?
I believe that's correct. Is that correct, Andrea? Yes.
Smiling eye, okay.
Yeah, there was, it's, yeah, we were very careful on that. And actually, just to touch a little bit on that, we actually held several meetings with Mr. Taylor, the owner of the property, and his sister, and even the, is it David Ruckus, the guy who owns the little maintenance shop in the back area? We had several meetings with him, just to make sure everyone's on the same page with the project and what it's going to look like, so. And we stepped out of that with the negotiations, that's between VDOT and the Taylors.
Okay, and so that has been completed? That's in the bank, so to speak, right?
Yep, that's all complete, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm sorry.
She said all transactions have been completed.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay.
Yeah, fair question.
All right. If there are no further questions, we will open the public hearing. Get your chances to sit down before everybody rushes up here, right? Open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak to this matter, please step forward, give us your name, your address, keep your three minutes. Okay. So, hearing no public comments, we'll close the public hearing. All right, gentlemen.
Well, Madam Chair, it's a little difficult for me to get behind something that I don't know what the alternatives are in terms of moving those drainage easements. I don't know what the choices are here in terms of the timing, I don't know how, you know, time-sensitive this is. But it'd be easier for me to get behind, you know, the donation if I knew it wasn't going to handicap our ability to develop those corners, because that's, in the big picture, Madam Chair, you mentioned how much this is costing, and the, how much do you get? How much you get is the ability to use those other three, well, the three corners there for productive economic development. So that's the give and that's the get. And if I don't know what the get is, because it may be impinged by the location, then I, it's a little harder for me to make that, what are we giving and what are we getting kind of trade-off and get behind it, if that makes sense. So I, at this point, I'm looking for what the alternatives might be in terms of the timing, whether we see alternatives first before we decide to choose. There may or may not be another alternative that's attractive, but if there is, I'd like to explore that before I get behind something. So I'm not sure exactly where that leaves us, but I don't know that I could approve this if there's a chance that we could improve on it before we approve it, if that makes sense.
I think you make a good point, frankly, Mr. Peterson. Is there someone who can speak to the timing issue, whether it's VDOT or Mr. Kilduff? If we, and how long would it take to get an alternative proposal? And what does that do to the timing of the project in general?
Right, yeah, and I'm going to defer to VDOT on that one. It sounds like there is a deadline that they have. But just point of clarification real quick, is the public hearing, while the easements, and I had Kelly clarify this for me, the public hearing's technically for the right-of-way, but because the easements are locked inside of the actual documents themselves, that's why they're part of the public hearing, even though the county administrator was provided the authority to sign all easements back at the, in 2017, when this project was originally came about. But because the easements are wrapped in with the right-of-way language, that's why they're a part of the public hearing. So my, I guess my question to VDOT is if we can separate out the easements and still move forward with the right-of-way public hearing, and then have the easements be a separate item that we look further into later. I don't, and I'm looking for a way to still move forward with the right-of-way, but I don't know if that's possible, Andrea, if you can come up here and...
Because of this particular situation, he's right, the Fee, the Fee Simple land, the land itself, that is something that's separate from the easements. They do have, hmm, how do I put this? Okay, so the land itself is, that is not going to change. We're still going to need that, no matter what the alternative is. The easements seems like where there's a little bit of an easiness and not sure if you want to get behind those particular easements and where the swim basins are located, right? So, the land itself, that conveyance, that's, correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, that's pretty solidified, and it doesn't have an effect on where the easements are placed. We're still going to need to acquire that particular, that land in Fee, because it is going to be needed for the roundabout either way. So it is possible to continue with altering the easement areas and moving forward with the land conveyance.
If you don't mind, I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth, just trying to understand here. So the donation of the county-owned land without related easements, is that something, and then come back and do the easements, is that what we're saying? Is a possibility?
So, the land itself?
Right.
We can do that, that transaction can be done separately from the easements. So if you all wanted to, if the county wants to look at alternatives for the drainage solution, that's something that we can do outside of a resolution for the land.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. At least I understand that, right? So I have a question, if you don't mind, for our attorney. We did advertise this as donation of land with related easements. If we separate the easements out, if we were to do that, is that an issue with the public hearing, or could we do that? I guess is my question.
Yes, you could do that. The public hearing, what's required by state code is to hold a public hearing before you give land away.
Right.
Everything is wrapped up in the same document, meaning the deed of donation describes the Fee land and all of the related easements. So that's the document that's currently prepared. That document wouldn't be able to be recorded in its current state. However, you could still hold a public hearing and agree to give the land to VDOT without charge, and we would draft a new document.
So, all right, so if the board so chose, they could do the donation of the land without the easements, are you saying that couldn't be recorded?
The document in your board packet wouldn't be recorded, because it's with all of the easements that are shown on the drawings. We would have to have a new document. You could still give the permission and the authorization. The public hearing is acknowledging that we are not charging for this land, and we can sign the acknowledgement that we are not charging for this land. If you want to wait and do it all together, of course, that's your prerogative.
Okay, so it sounds like we really can't separate them if we want to record it, is that right?
We have to rewrite the deed.
We have to rewrite it.
We should have to rewrite the deed to fit what we approved.
Gotcha.
Which would be just, which would just be the elimination of the easements, the easement portion, I believe. Oh, sorry, Andrea, you can come on up. So again, all we're really talking about is eliminating the easement language from the actual right-of-way language in the donation of the 1.03 acres, which the 1.03 acres doesn't change. That's actually what's needed for the road itself. The easements can be moved and shifted, but let Andrea make sure she can clarify.
So, I'm sorry, apparently I did not convey that correctly. Okay, so when I said they could be separated, I meant in the, with the board moving forward with the resolution for the land. Actually, reporting the document, we can hold off until the easements are done. I just want to make sure that we're moving, that we have the permission to go ahead and move forward when the time comes, when those easements have been altered and everyone is pleased, we can move right into recording that document.
So, Madam Chair, so my original question was the timing. What would, what would a 30-day or 60-day delay in our decision do to the timing? Does that create an issue or a problem for VDOT? Because I don't want to create unintended consequences here. I'd like to just know what the impacts might be on the project itself and from your standpoint.
Tony, what is the...
Yeah, so for the right-of-way phase, we were scheduled to have it completed by 12/1, so, you know, less than a month from now. And then at the end of December, we would start our utility relocation, and that would take about a year. And so that would get us to advertise early in 2022. So if we delay the right-of-way acquisition, it just pushes back our add date. So, yeah, there is a chain reaction. So we're trying to, 12/1 is the original date, so we can try to keep our February 2022 add date. And the longer we delay it, it just pushes everything back.
So our next board meeting is the first weekend, or first week of December. It's not December 1st, but it's the first week of December. Is that, would that create an issue from your standpoint?
December 1.
Oh, it is December, all right, it is December 1, which is the first week of December.
It's the first, it's close.
That's true. We have a, we do have a board meeting on the 24th of November for other purposes, but we do have a scheduled monthly board meeting on December 1st. I guess the second part of that question is, would, is that enough time to be able to develop an alternative to extend the drain fields out of the immediate area? Is that enough time to be able to come up with something that would be an alternative to what we're looking at here?
Yeah, so I'm, have a good feeling the hydraulic folks, you know, really looked at many options, and it just, they could give me an answer like this week, and probably explain why this is the best choice, and, you know, they can tell me the other options they've looked at. I can get that response quickly. So, I mean, if there's a way we could just provide that to you outside of the board meeting, that'd be, that could easily be done.
Okay. That, if a couple of weeks turn around time for alternatives would be satisfactory to VDOT, and if a 30-day deferral under the decision till December 1st at our next board meeting doesn't create an issue from your standpoint.
So, so then I'll, you know, look to Andrea.
It would adjust the right-of-way phase timeline?
Please, to the mic, if you don't mind, for people to listen, yeah.
It would affect the right-of-way timeline, based on the projections, the timeline that we have now for the project. Probably because once the document has been approved, the resolution has been made, then there is the process of closing that transaction, which can take up to 60 days. So that'll extend that as well.
Madam Chair, I have a question, if I may. And, Mr. Kilduff, this might be a little bit of an engineering, can you bring up one of the slides that shows those easements again?
Sure.
Just particularly like, the one on, okay, well, that we, that's, so that's going to be the southwest corner, right?
Yeah, so the red highlighted area, what says donation?
I'm focused on the drainage easements.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the southwest of the, of the roundabout.
Here's my, here's where my head is, and I'm trying to, I'm going to craft a motion, I think, if I can get through this so we can discuss.
Sure.
It seems to me the focus is on the drainage easement. It also seems to me that this southwest corner is, is maybe less optimal. I mean, I don't know that, you know, if there's time to consider it, we maybe should, but I'm mostly, go to the slide where we see the southeast corner.
This one right here?
Well, where the, where the utility easement is on...
Right there.
I'm sorry, where the drainage easement, so there's a little drain, there's a little drain, there, that's the one.
Yeah, gotcha.
So there, there's a big chunk of that. How far is that away from the intersection?
Yeah, there's actually the, if you bear with me as I toggle back and forth here. I could just hit escape, and, oh, there we go. There we go.
Just maybe a little, I know that we don't have the hydrology people here, but it sounds like, and from what I know about it, it sounds like that southeast corner is going to be a tougher, that's a tougher parcel anyway. The south, southwest is a tough parcel. The southeast, when Mr. Peterson started talking about that, I thought, because you said, somebody said swim ba, or basins?
Stormwater basin, yeah.
So is that what you're talking about on both sides there, our basins? So I mean, it's going to make it completely unusable, the design right now. Both corners would be unusable for anything else.
Sir, so this was, it is not a basin, what it is, is the water, it spreads it out. It's a, the water gets there and then it spreads it out, so that way, you know, it's not making a, you know, a channelized stream. So this is a hydraulic, it's a, it's a spread hydraulic spreader, so it's not a basin.
Okay.
So it's not a lake.
And on both, both corners?
Yes, that's correct.
So I'm just wondering if, if we, if we said the southwest corner, leave it alone as designed, does that make it easier? Because I look, imagine you look at the intersection as a whole. Does it make it engineering-wise easier if we say we're only asking you to go back and look at one corner, maybe doing something with the utility easement on the southeast, and we leave the southwest alone? Might that, might, might that make the engineering feat that you're looking at a little bit easier to tackle?
Yeah, I mean, yes, it would. But we would find the answer to, you know, to both, why, you know, why we chose those locations, and yet was there other alternatives? But, yeah, if you just want to have us focus on just the southeast.
Well, but it sounds like what you said a few minutes ago, is you'll be able to get an answer pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Regardless?
Yes.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve the donation of 1.03 acres of county-owned land with all related easements except the drainage easements shown this evening to the Virginia Department of Transportation to create right-of-way for the Fairground Road and Sandy Hook Road roundabout project, and authorize the county administrator to execute, if appropriate, a deed of donation for the Fee Simple land with the non-drainage easements. with the non-drainage easements and the donation acknowledgement form prepared by VDOT.
Second.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments, questions? Well, I think.
Mr.?
I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't see you.
This motion is crafted, gets you moving. The drainage can be figured out, but that doesn't slow down anything, so that does not put the project delayed. So that, to me, is.
Madam Chair, and at, at what point, I mean, I presume we're going to move with all due haste on this easement, but the drainage, but at, at what point do you have a drop-dead when you need that easement to be finalized? Is that years out in the future, or is that something you need right away, or?
Final plans is due summer, next summer, upcoming summer, so we have time to iron it all out.
30 to 60 days we get this cleaned up.
Yes, sir.
It gives us more, it gives us more time.
Yeah.
But the critical thing is getting the right-of-way donated so we can get the utility folks started, and then we can, in the meantime, work out the best design for the utility easements.
That's great, because I'd hate to go through all this, spend millions of dollars and have a just nice park, a nice park downtown, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. The only comment I would make is those who know how I voted on this to begin with in 2017 know that I steadfastly oppose this roundabout, so I think you probably know how I vote. Mr. Young, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Laskolet?
No, thank you. Okay.
Thank you all for.
Thank you very much. All righty.
Thank you.
So we're making our way through the public hearings. All right, the next one is application by Sherri Brockenbrow, requests amendment to one of the conditions in the conditional use permit. And Ms. Hunter, I believe that you will present the case. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Young, Joanne Hunter, Director of Community Development. This, as Ms. Laskolet had indicated, this is an amendment to a 2019 conditional use permit filed by Mrs. Brockenbrow to change one of the conditions dealing with the hours of operation that was approved in 2019. Property is located in the edge of the Courthouse Village, near the southern boundary of the county. This is the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan designates this property as rural enhancement area, and there is commercial designation to the east of this property, southeast. Say, this is the comprehensive plan, that was the zoning map. So you will see, there areas designated as residential. The blue area just to the east is referencing the post office, the red is the commercial area there, and the blue is county-owned or institutional, and that includes county land and the state-owned land. You can see the aerial photo. The property is adjacent to the CSX Railroad and has a access off of Maiden's Loop. Hilltop Distillery is a family-owned business that's owned and operated by the Brockenbrows. They did receive a CUP in 2019 to open a distillery. This is the first distillery in the county. They modified an existing building and constructed a second building to operate the distillery and the tasting room, and they also have storage for their whiskey and bourbon barrels. There is an existing home on the property, and Mr. Brockenbrow does live in the home on site. Here is their conceptual plan that was approved in 2019. If you can see number four, which is located towards the top, this is the tasting room. The tasting room is about 1,900 square feet, so it is fairly small. This is the parking area. This is the existing dwelling, and these are some storage buildings on site. The, the property is open to sell distilled spirits during hours and days that are permitted by the ABC Retail Operations. However, the tasting room, when it was approved, the conditions limited the tasting operation till Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 1:00 to 7:00. The applicant is requesting the amendment to those hours to add Sunday. The same hours on Sunday would be 1:00 to 7:00. We did look, since this is the only distillery in the county, we did look at other breweries and wineries in the county, and those operations do have Sunday hours. A community meeting was held on August 19th at site. Supervisor Lumpkins and staff were in attendance, so there was one question regarding the additional hours of operation, and there was a tour of the facility. And at the planning commission meeting, this was approved with a 4-0 vote. There was one member absent, and no one spoke at the public hearing. The conditions are blacklined from 2019, and most of these are just references to things that were, that were required to get the use up and operating. But now that they're operating, we sort of modified some of the conditions. So number one is to establish the use as the distillery. A plan of development was required. They have gone through that process and received their POD approval, so that is blacklined. The site plans, the improvements must conform to the conceptual plan that I showed to you in the presentation. They did get a parking wa, parking and paving waiver to allow the parking area to be gravel except for the handicap spots, and those are already in, so those are blacklined. They just now have to be in compliance with the POD, which shows that. They did get an access waiver because this just, Maiden's Loop is a shared private road. They're allowed a 25-square-foot sign. Number six was the impetus for the CUP amendment, so previously had limited those hours to 1:00 to 7:00, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and you'll see underlying, we did add the Sunday to allow the Sunday hours if that's approved this evening. Music, no amplified music is allowed, and music shall not be plainly audible beyond the exterior boundary of the property. If they have lighting, they have to have a approval from the community development office and our standard transfer or lease condition. Be happy to answer any questions, and there is a draft motion provided for your reference this evening. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions on the applicant.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any questions? No. If you don't mind, would you go back just real quick? Number four, you didn't change anything on number four, did you? No.
The only change was the reference, because that was the old zoning ordinance reference, and we updated the new.
Right, to the new reference.
But the, the content did not change.
Right, so now that changes.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. All right, the applicant is here. Do you have any comments, or? No? I, I can't hear you.
She said allergies are not working for her today.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay, that's fine, absolutely. Okay, so we will open the public hearing on this application. All right, we will, we will continue, I think we can. So anyone who'd like to, like to speak to this application, support or oppose, please step forward, give us your name, address, stay to three minutes. Mr. Lump.
It's always interesting, the IT guys praying at the computer there. Jonathan Lau, 1521 Mannakin Road, and I'm in favor of extending these hours. I might even ask if they would like to go beyond just those four days, but I, I did hear Ms. Hunter say that this was the first distillery in the county. She might want to amplify and say it's the first licensed distillery in the county, but I'll just throw that out there for what it's worth. I spoke earlier at the 2:00 meeting about tourism, and you may or may not have noticed over the last decade, the winery industry sort of led the way, then craft breweries, and now craft distilleries are becoming quite a destination for folks throughout the Commonwealth. I've had the privilege or the pleasure of visiting Hilltop. It is quite an impressive operation, certainly not something that you'd, well, you wouldn't see it back in the hills, let's leave it at that. So if this is something that can be approved, and I hope it can, I would encourage us to do that. These are tough times for the tourism industry. You might almost say this is a self-medicating opportunity for folks out there, but I, I think it would be a nice addition, and one of the things I've learned in marketing is you look at what consumers do and accommodate them as opposed to try to change what they do. And if Thursday is not a, a time that they are visiting breweries, wineries, or distilleries, I would say accommodate what the public is saying they'd like to do, so I hope you'll approve it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lau. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none. Close the public hearing. Okay, board.
Madam Chair, I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve the application CU 2019-4A for Sherri Brockenbrow to change the hours, adding, adding the Sunday hours of operations for Hilltop Distillery on the shown tax map numbers and also as, with the changes in the conditions as presented by Ms. Hunter.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Young, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Absolutely.
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
Chair Laskolet?
Yes. Okay, all right, you have, you have your approval. Good luck to you. Okay, all right, so the next public hearing. I'm sorry, George Mendoza, requesting a conditional use permit. Ms. Hunter?
Yes, good evening again. This is a conditional use permit to allow a detached accessory family housing unit, which basically in common speak is an apartment above a garage. It's for an eight-acre parcel that's located at 691 Mannakin Road in the east end of the county. The property is designated as residential on the comprehensive plan, and the property is zoned R3, and the majority of the properties around it are zoned A2 or some residential zoning. You can see this is an aerial here, there is an existing home towards the front of the site, there are several outbuildings on the property. This home is going to be being rehabbed by the applicant, and during the rehab, they're going to build the garage first and live above the garage while they rehab the structure, and then once they move into the existing house, the garage, the apartment would be still subject to the CUP conditions. This is the location, proposed location of the garage here. At the community meeting, Planning Commissioners Myers and Protuck and eight neighbors were in attendance. There was discussion about the history of property, the structure's driveway access, it will share access with the existing home, whether it would be visible from the road, and several attendees spoke in favor of the application, no one spoke in opposition, and no concerns were identified. At the planning commission meeting, it was approved with a 4-0 vote. There was one planning commissioner absent, and one adjoining property owner did come and speak in favor of the request at the planning commission public hearing. Be happy to answer any questions. Oh, let me tell you the conditions first, sorry.
Well, I'm going to let you get by with that.
You've seen these before, so these are our standard conditions for our detached family housing units. Number one is for the use. Number two, it limits the, to only people related to the resident of the principal dwelling shall reside in it, it cannot be used as a rental unit, a smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector needs to be installed in the property, emergency access needs to be provided. This would be a five-year CUP, which is standard practice for our first CUPs, which would take it to 2025 and our transfer and ownership of, lease of the property, which is our standard condition. So now I'd be happy to answer any questions.
There you go. Cut to the chase, right? All right, board, any questions, comments? Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here, yes.
Okay, would you like to come forward and make any comments?
Sure.
All right, come on up.
Good night, everyone. My name is Jorge Mendoza. I recently purchased a property on Mannakin Road. The address is 691 Mannakin Road, and we're excited to live in Goochlin. It's been a long journey for me. I've been looking on a property on Mannakin Savant for a while now, and now that we have it, we've begun the process of cleaning. When I purchased the property, when you saw the aerial photo, some trees had already fallen in the back structures, so I'm cleaning right now, and I'm really excited about this project, and I would like to answer any, any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Let you off easy then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay. All right, so we'll open the, the public hearing on this conditional use permit. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor or oppose?
Good evening, my name is Martin Dean. I'm at 251 Running Cedar Trail, which if you looked at that map, it was the dark green corner. I'm the closest neighbor to the closest development for that property. I drive regularly from my property to Station 1 and back, so I doubt there are few in Mannakin Savant who traverse and pass that property more than I do. I'm in support of it. I, I know Mr. Mendoza, I know his family pretty well. He is an architect and a contractor. He does beautiful work, and I have no doubt that whatever he does will be a great amenity for the area and its location, and so far off the road, he'd probably notice it. So I speak in support of it and would love to have it approved. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dean, appreciate that. Anyone else? Mr. Lau?
Jonathan Lau, 1521 Mannakin Road. So being a Mannakin Road neighbor of Mr. Mendoza, I would also like to see this approved. I cannot say I pass it as frequently as it is across the street neighbor, but I do pass by it frequently. I think it actually will be enhancing the area. It's the kind of thing that I think adds to a community where you see a quality rehab of an existing building taking place. I have a detached, we call it a carriage house, for whatever reason, I guess that's what we were told to call it, so we do, but it's a garage, and it's got a, a small living area upstairs. It's not a house, because it doesn't have a kitchen. The planning folks made very sure that we did not put a kitchen in there, so it's just a guest quarters, which actually then prompted the thought, I know with the Airbnb licensing and such, it says no rental whatsoever. I guess I'm grandfathered, I don't care to have AB&amp;B folks staying in my carriage house, but would that preclude them from having that kind of opportunity should they down the road? And I am just asking that question out loud, because that's the kind of stuff I do. So at any rate, I hope you all approve it, and welcome to Mannakin Road. And if you see me running, please, you know, slow down, give me three feet. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lau. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Okay. All right, so board, anyone would like to make a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would. Madam Chair, I move that we approve conditional use permit 2020-00009, application by Jorge Mendoza, requesting a conditional use permit for detached accessory family housing unit at 691 Mannakin Road as presented. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. If there are no further comments or questions, Mr. Young, may we have a roll call vote?
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Laskolet?
Yes. So you have, you have your approval, and welcome. Okay, next item of business. Okay, next item of business. Application by Bellevue Gardens Medical LLC, a conditional use permit. Ms. Hunter.
Yes, good evening once again. This is a conditional use permit 2020-08 by Bellevue Gardens Medical to allow placement of fill in a floodplain. Property is located in the Centerville Village on the north side of Broad Street. This is the comprehensive plan map, and it's the property that's at the intersection of Broad Street Road and Mills Road. These properties here, which are designated commercial, they were zoned in 2012 as BN, which is our neighborhood business zoning district. And there are residential zoning on two sides of the property and then vacant commercial to the west of this property. Here is the aerial photo. As I said, this is at Mills Road. Mills Road is also the entrance to Bellevue Gardens, which is a 47-lot subdivision. And just want to give you a more detailed version, but the floodplain runs along... You'll see this low area. When you drive down Broad Street, you can see the dip, and this is the floodplain area. So this property was zoned back in 2012 to neighborhood business. It had extensive proffers on the property. There was a lot of citizen input at that time during the rezoning case with the Bellevue Gardens neighborhood. So some of the proffers, there's the conceptual plan. The uses on the property were listed limited to professional offices, financial institutions, or government uses. There was proffers regarding the exterior materials, the elevations. The max they were allowed to construct is two buildings with a combined maximum square footage of 19,000 square feet. And then there were other proffers dealing with noise, debris removal, and construction activities. The applicant did come forward in 2016 and apply for a certificate of approval, because this is in the 250 Broad Street overlay. And at that time, they had the elevations and site plan approved. Since that time, this is the elevations that were approved through the COA, so it'd be two buildings that look similar to this. They are designed to be residential in scale and be a nice entranceway to the Bellevue Gardens neighborhood. And this is conceptual plan. Since they've gotten the COA approval in 2016, FEMA has been starting to remap the county's floodplain areas. This is one of the properties that were impacted by this. They went forward, since we're still waiting for the official maps from FEMA, they did their own floodplain study. You can see this dashed red line here that sort of splits the property down the center. This is the area that is being impacted by the floodplain fringe. As I showed you that map, here is the floodplain area that runs across Broad Street, and this is in the fringe area of the floodplain. So the purpose of this CUP is... It has nothing to do with the use of the property. What they are proposing, the medical offices, is permitted in compliance with the COA and the proffers. They can still develop the property without getting this CUP. They would just have to have... Get rid of one building. And the request is consistent with the commercial designation. So actually, FEMA is actually the technical reviewing agency of this request. They have reviewed it and approved the request. Our code just does require that it comes back to the Board of Supervisors to let the Board of Supervisors know and have the final say. However, adding the fill will raise the site to a higher elevation, and it's outside of the floodplain. This would allow the property to be constructed in the manner proposed during the zoning case with the two buildings, and it may eliminate the flood insurance premium as well. Since FEMA is the reviewing agency, agent, I just wanted to give you a little bit of information on the FEMA's process. So that is the federal mapping, floodplain mapping. It allows for fill in the floodplain fringe if a flood study shows that there will be no effect on the flood elevation or increased flooding on adjacent property. They have reviewed it for this and found that that is correct, that that would not occur. The applicant has submitted a plan for placing fill on the property to FEMA and has received approval for this, and that approval is called a CLOMAR or a Conditional Letter of Map Revision. Once the fill is complete, the applicant will then request a letter of map amendment to FEMA, which is a LOMAR, and the flood maps would be revised to show the fill areas are no longer part of the 100-year floodplain. So again, FEMA has already approved this, and our code just requires it to come back through the board CUP process. That's sort of a transparent process, so the board is aware of it. The applicant is responsible for developing his property in a manner that does not adversely affect the drainage to adjacent properties. FEMA does agree that this can occur. And this includes designing stormwater infrastructure that will adequately move upstream water through the property without backing up water on other properties. At the community meeting, that was one of the concerns, is how would it impact drainage? And FEMA has indicated that it would have no impact on the adjoining property owners. That community meeting was held back in August. Mr. Protuck and 11 citizens attended. As I indicated, they were concerned, would it impact the flooding to their neighborhood? And the answer was no, based on the technical reports. And then there were several other questions and concerns about the development. At the October planning commission meeting, it was approved with a 4-0 vote, and no one spoke at the public hearing. The conditions for this is that fill may be placed in the flood fringe area of the 100-year floodplain on the property as requested. Improvements would conform to the conceptual plan shown in the presentation. And then the 15 proffered conditions would still remain in effect on this property. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It is pretty technical. So the applicant's engineer is here, as well as staff environmental manager is here to answer questions. But I can answer basic questions. But anything other than that, we'll get somebody else up here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hunter. Questions at this point? All right, go ahead.
This is just confirmations from some questions that were posed to me. I think I know the answers, but... No wetlands are in this... Nothing's going to be changed with any wetlands. So there's no consideration, concern about that. And nothing's changing the zoning, original zoning. This is nothing but filling in to get out of a flood zone, which...
Right, it's just raising the elevation of the site to be above the floodway.
And those rates keep going up, so it's... If you can get out of it, that's a good thing. Thank you.
Ms. Hunter, if you don't mind, just one quick thing. You have said that FEMA has approved the plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And they say that this will not cause water drainage on other properties. What happens if that's... If they're wrong, and it does? I mean, is this the property owner responsible for that?
So they have to do pretty significant flood studies to submit the information. So their engineering shows that would not happen. I guess it could...
I guess anything, right.
Right. But the applicant, the owner of the property is required to manage the water on their site. So it would, you know, be reviewed again through our site plan process and all. But all indications say that it would not impact the adjacent property owners.
Right. And I would say, and obviously not being an engineer, at this point, I'm going to believe that that's true, that it's going to be managed properly. But let's say there a problem does develop. Is that something the county then has to get involved in in monitoring? I mean, does this come back into our lap, is, I guess, is what I'm trying to ask?
No, I've been told no.
Okay, so if for... Who knows, for whatever reason, there's drainage on adjacent property, then it would come back to FEMA? Is that what we're saying? And the county would not have to enforce anything? I mean, where would the complaint go, I guess, is part of my question. I'm just trying to understand the process. I mean, it's likely fine.
Madam Chairman, members of the board.
Hello. This is my first time addressing y'all. Madam Chairman, just members of the board. My name is John Woodburn. I'm the environmental manager for Goosling County. And I'm a civil engineer by background, a professional engineer, and have even done work... My first job out of college was working for an engineering firm, looking at floodplain maps and letters of map revision. So I'm pretty familiar with this process. First off, just to talk about what FEMA does. They look at... They model the stream using accepted hydraulic models, both in a before-and-after scenario. And one thing they concluded, and this is in their study, is that this fill will not result in any change to the base flood elevation in that area. I have a document. I'm going to show you a document in front of you. But this is the FEMA Conditional Letter of Map Revision. And it talks about, you know, the conditions before and after, and makes a clear statement that the floodplain elevation does not change. As far as, you know, the concerns about the adjacent properties, these properties are... I've looked at these properties. These are upgrading properties. They're already out of the floodplain. What they are doing in this fill is not going to push the floodplain into their property. As far as engineering to site to pass drainage through, that's something we do every day when we look at the site plan. There's always properties. You know, the properties, some are higher, some are lower than when you want to build. And we always have to look at and consider how the water comes on a property and is conveyed through a property, so we don't have adverse effects on adjacent property owners. So that's addressed in our site plan process. Does this help, you know, answer your questions?
So frankly, I believe you. I read the report you showed me. I believe you, and I'm sure it's 99.9%. My question just simply is, what if you're wrong? What does adjacent properties recourse? That's my question.
Generally, matters of drainage are civil matters between adjacent property owners. So it would be something that if someone thought... Someone had done something on their property that adversely affected their property's drainage, they could possibly take action against them legally.
Even though the county approved something that potentially... And again, I'm sure it's very minor, just... So the county approved something that causes... And then they'd have to just go to court, is basically what you're saying. The county is not involved in that process.
Well, we approve things based upon design standards. So if it meets these design standards, then, you know, it meets the engineering standards that govern, you know, the design and construction of improvements.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you very much. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hard to talk to someone doesn't have the engineering background, right? Okay, any other questions at this point? Okey-dokey. Then we shall open the public hearing. Anyone wish to... Oh, wait a minute, did we ask for the applicant? Applicant like to make a comment? I don't think we did that, did we?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Kinter, and I represent Bellevue Gardens Medical LLC as one of its owners. Also with me tonight is Leon Gudorp with Timmins. She's the big gun I'll bring in if we need to get into some of the real technical issues related to flooding, et cetera, that we'd be more than happy to speak to. I think the one point that is deserving of emphasis is the FEMA approval. I was fortunate enough to handle the rezoning of this property many years ago, and we moved pretty slow in our office. But we're ready to go here. And during the rezoning process, the floodplain, based on everything available to us through the FEMA maps, was along our western property line that abuts property owned by Mr. Pruitt through a LLC called Foolsgold. So we thought, at that point, that it was not going to impact us. A few years later, we probably should have developed sooner, maybe we wouldn't have had this problem. But a few years later, when we... When we're now... When I was getting ready to come in with the site plan, we learned about this floodplain remapping. And not wanting to wait for FEMA, because I'm getting kind of old, and not wanting to do that, we commissioned our own study and embarked on getting the permit. And that was where, along with Deborah Bird, when she was here, and John Woodburn, we... They reviewed our application, endorsed it on behalf of the county, and we went into FEMA for the CLOMAR approval, establishing the new boundaries and the fill that would then be placed. With some real emphasis on the most important issue here, which is knowing that we then would have to get a CUP, that we can't do anything that harms adjacent properties. That's a big mandate for you and that I know about when we would prepare an application, and that we would not do that. And the engineering is what we have to base it on. There's also... So we had the CLOMAR, we got that, and now we'd like to get, with your approval, the CUP approved to allow us to place the fill. And the conditions that are attached, the three conditions, are fine. One of the things I would like to speak to is a question Mr. Sharp brought up. Might as well deal with it. There was a wetland on the property that emerged from the time we bought it. And we had not... Land disturbed the property, but we had clear-cut it, and we disturbed it. We did... And Jean Bradford, who's with DEQ, lives in Goosling. She spotted it, she notified of us, it was a violation. So we then pursued what's called an after-the-fact permit, which we were granted. It was very minor. It was 0.27 acres, quarter of an acre. We then, with that recognized, we got the permit, and we paid for the non-titled wetlands credits of either $49,000 or $47,000 for that impact. So we got square with DEQ for that. So now there are no wetlands remaining on the property. And as far as, when you sort of look at this property and the flooding and the fill, and Leon brought a nice exhibit that can show you where we're placing the fill and how much. But if you think of this site three dimensionally, if you're moving from Broad Street northward toward the neighborhood, if the water gets up to that higher point in the floodplain, which would be at our finished floor elevation of our building, it's probably a foot or two above Broad Street. That's how this site, with Broad out here, it works like this. So, and the neighborhood's way up here. So the water, with this being set elevations, if it ever really totally flooded out our site, it would flood way above Broad Street. So, and I think that's very unlikely. And we have, I believe, met the burden with FEMA, and we'll meet it again with our site plan approval through our land disturbance permit, our civil engineering burden for the pre- and post-development release of stormwater that's required of everybody. So I feel confident we're doing everything we can to mitigate and not either short-term or long-term impact adjacent properties. And I think we're doing the best we can there. With that said, we'll be able to... We'll be happy to answer any of your questions. But I would respectfully request that you follow the planning commission's recommendation and approve CU 220-00008 with the three conditions as stated in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Does anyone have a question of the applicant at this point? Okay, all right, thank you very much. So actually, technically now, we will open the public hearing. Anyone would like to comment on this application? Anyone would like to comment on this application? This conditional, conditional use permit, Mr. Long.
John Falau, 1521 Manniken Road. When I saw this as a community meeting, it caught my eye as a director for the Soil and Water Conservation District, because I am somewhat familiar with what I call the seasonal lake that will appear down there. And so I went in there with some skepticism, but Mr. Woodburn was very gentle and kind and educated me on karst fills and things that engineers know a lot more about. And the, I believe it was the Timmins representative that was there at the time, reassured that anything that they did would have to hold harmless the other residents there. And the residents there, I was one of the 11 that were there, but were concerned was, you know, how do you fill in a low spot without water going somewhere else? It's too bad the VDOT guys aren't here, because if they could open up that overpass or thruway there, maybe the water would flow a little more easily. But I also appreciate that you make a plan, and then the government comes in and changes the rules on you, which they did with remapping the floodplain. So I have confidence, or I'm putting confidence, that both what the county staff has done and what I've heard from Timmins will keep those other homeowners, citizens harmless. And I'm just saying, let's go ahead and do it. And you hope for the best, you know, because you don't control the weather, or if you do, you're fooling yourself. So I appreciate the work they've done, the good faith effort. And I did actually go down there, we got a couple three inches of rain last week, and I walked the property, and it's a little soggy. I hope I wasn't trespassing, but if I was, I added myself. And the lake was pretty extensive there. I actually took pictures, but I'm not going to hand anything to somebody, because I might be a super spreader, but a light flash. So I'll just sit down by saying, I hope you approve it.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Long. Anyone else? No? Oops. Okay, saying none. We will close the public hearing. Okay, board. Any other questions or comments? Someone like to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Gooseland County Board of Supervisors approve application CU 2020-0008 for Bellevue Gardens Medical LLC to fill the area according to the specifications as presented this evening.
Okay. So we have a motion. Seconds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All right. Mr. Young, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Chair LaScalle?
Yes.
Okay. Have your approval. If you don't mind, we'll take maybe about a five-minute break before our next case.
Sure.
Thank you very much for the little delay there.
Of course. Last public hearing this evening is a countywide ordinance amendment dealing with the timing of installation and sidewalks, sidewalks and street trees. The purpose of the ordinance amendment, it was initiated by H.H. Hunt Mosaic. The request is to change the timing for sidewalks and street trees installation. But as I already said, this would be, if it was approved, it would be a countywide ordinance amendment, not just with the Mosaic subdivision. So right now, the zoning ordinance does require that all subdivision improvements have to be in once 50% of the lots have been issued building permits. This has been in place for about three years now. Those improvements include things like turn lanes, street signs, fire protection, things like that, and it also included the sidewalks. The applicant is requesting exception for the timing for the sidewalk installation. This would be for the sidewalks only in front of the lots and the street trees. The developer's concern with the way our code is written is that the sidewalks and street trees adjacent to lots are part of the home building process and should be completed simultaneously. When sidewalks are installed early in the building process, they indicated that there are concerns that it leads to potential damage and replacement, and with the replacement, it may lead to a patchwork appearance where the repairs were done. So when the applicant originally came to us about the ordinance amendment, they asked if we would consider bonding these improvements so that they could be done later in the process. Staff did have concerns with our ability to maintain our current staffing level, levels, and add a new work item of additional bonding, which requires a lot of administrative work. So this amendment would allow the sidewalks and street trees to be installed at the issuance at the CO instead of at the 50% building permits. The sidewalks and landscaping of the common areas would still be done at the 50% of the building permits. So this is only for the sidewalks directly in front of the houses. So that was our proposal, is, okay, we'll change it to the time of the CO. Once we had talked to internally with different staff, and particularly our building official, they had concerns with tying another item to the CO. Our number of COs have doubled over the last year. They indicated it's more than just checking a box of whether a sidewalk is installed, that they would actually need to make sure the slope and drainage was installed correctly, and that they really just didn't have the staff to do this. In other localities, multiple departments go out and check for the CO. In our office, we only have the building inspector go out, and they check for multiple items even beyond their department. So that's how it's done in other places, but there's concerns that with our staffing levels, we just wouldn't be able to do that. So, in speaking with another developer, they had suggested this, and staff brought this forward in the application, instead of the, our building inspection staff reviewing it during COs, that they would have to provide a third-party professional to provide certification with the CO application that the improvements are installed in compliance with the plan of development. So our staff wouldn't be looking at it, it would require another step for the developer to provide this third-party certification that the sidewalks were in, that they met all the drainage concerns and slope and all of those issues. So this is the code language that would need to change to make this occur. This is the provision that states when the 50% of lots that have been issued building permits, they have to make all of those improvements that I indicated, such as the roads, curve, gutter, turn lanes, things like that. And then there's now a new provision, which would be underlined, that says, except that for residential dwellings, additional time is provided for street tree installation and sidewalk construction. For residential dwellings, street trees and sidewalks must be completed, and sidewalk construction must be certified to be in accordance with the plan of development by a third-party engineer, architect, or similarly licensed professional prior to the CO. So again, it would, this ordinance amendment would change it from 50% of building permits to at the time of CO, and there would be, require certification. And then there was updates to two other sections in order to make that change occur. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is H.H. Hunt, and Representative Front Hunt and their attorney is here also.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any questions at this point? I do have one. So I'm just trying to vision this. So if this were to be approved, we're saying that for residential dwellings, additional time is provided, sidewalks be certified in accordance with plan and development. So this would be at the CO stage?
Yes. And so the way it works now is you have a subdivision or a subdivision section, which is typically about 49 lots. Once they got to 50% or that 25th building permit, and this is a building permit when everything's still under construction, they have to put in all the sidewalks, all the street trees, all of the fire prevention, it's information, the signs, everything. So this would change that to, at the 50%, they'd still need to do all those other things, but the sidewalks during construction would not occur until the CO is being issued, and it would have a third-party inspector saying it was installed properly and in compliance with the plan of development.
And that third-party would be a professional with professional liability?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So as they're building out a subdivision or a section of a subdivision, do they necessarily build one house after the other? Or they hopscotch around?
So typically, I think every developer is a little differently, but I think in general, people pick their lots.
Right.
So it wouldn't necessarily be one house after the other. Someone might want to be on the cul-de-sac, someone might want to be on the corner over here.
Or the lake, or whatever.
So, yeah.
Right. So if this were approved, then at the time you get the certificate of occupancy for, say, the lot at the end of the cul-de-sac, the sidewalk goes in front of that house, then three lots down is the next CO, and a piece of sidewalk goes in front of that house.
That's correct.
Okay. That's what, if this were approved. Now, it's when at 50%.
50%.
They put all of the sidewalk in.
Yes.
Okay.
And the concern by the development community is that once it's in, and then they're building, they're doing the construction, then it gets damaged during construction. So that would, that's what their concern is.
Thank you. Okay. That makes sense. Okay. Any other questions at this point? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What happens if the third-party professional goofs up?
They would be certifying it, so they would be liable that they certified it. So if we had a drainage complaint, we would go back, pull the permit, and see who certified it, and go back to that engineer.
Okay. Do we have an understanding that if we amend this, the developer understands that it means what it says and it doesn't mean what it doesn't say?
Is that a hypothetical question?
Hypothetically, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, so what I heard you say to answer Mr. Sharp's question is, we're going to go out and do a CO, we're not going to check the sidewalks, and then the burden is now placed back on the homeowner to have a complaint. So we've went ahead and authorized something, but then we're not really verifying the third-party's work, so we're just leaving the homeowner to bear the responsibility that it was done right. Okay. Thank you.
Was that a yes?
It was a yes.
And discussion with another, with another large builder, who had actually suggested this as a possible way of handling it, so the county wouldn't have to bring staff in to monitor it. They said one of the problems is you put in sidewalks, a subcontractor comes through, drives over the sidewalk with a tractor-trailer or a dump truck or something and crushes the curves, they have to go back and rebuild it. Once you put them in and you have to rebuild it, you get color, differences in color, because they were poured six months ago, and now you've got to rip out a section, so you've got different colors. And people are buying, spending a lot of money on houses, and they don't want their sidewalks and gutters to be different colors. So they had suggested this, and I think it's a decent workaround. I just want assurance that it means what it says, and that, well, that's not how somebody else does it in Yahoo, Virginia. This is what Gooseland does, this is what it means, and this is what's going to be done.
That might be a question for the applicant. But Ms. Hunter, I'd like to go back to, if the issue is that to repair a section that maybe had been damaged during construction, six months, eight, whatever, months later, and the concern is that it would be, it would look different, because it's a different pour, right? Why would it not look different if you're pouring pieces at a time throughout the subdivision?
It would.
Six and eight months apart?
It would.
It would be the same thing, right?
Madam Chair, Ms. Hunter, have we had complaints in the past five, 10, 15 years that sidewalks were different colors? I mean, is this something that's come up in the past?
No, this is the first time that this has occurred. I think Mosaic has the smallest lot sizes of any subdivision in the county, so I think that's why they may be having a little more issues with it. When we did meet with Eagle Markell, who has done a number of subdivisions, they had indicated that they sometimes have to go in and replace the sidewalk, but they have, they have been in compliance and not raised it as a concern previously.
Okay. And then the certification, could that come from an affiliate of H.H. Hunt, or does that have to be an unaffiliated party?
It has to be a licensed architect, engineer, or similar. I don't specifically believe it says anything that it has to be somebody that they've hired. So I guess if they had somebody on staff, I didn't really think of that, if they had somebody on staff. So that may be some language. Well, it says a third-party, yeah. No, I think they could probably.
Third-party should mean unaffiliated.
Should mean.
So.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just asked that to know whether it's a disinterested party coming in with no accident.
I would say as a third-party, that would address that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay, Ms. Hunter, the applicant is here.
Yes.
Ms. Young, do you think we could load the PowerPoint? Okay. Thank you. Excuse the delay, Madam Chair. We have a few PowerPoint slides that may benefit the board in response to some of the questions asked.
Sure. Absolutely.
The Planning Commission, so it'll just take a moment to bring them up. Putting Ms. Hunter on the spot, because I didn't load this in advance, so I apologize for the delay, which is.
That's quite all right.
I know, I'm going into the best drive.
If you'll permit me to begin, just in the interest of your efficiency. As you've heard, Ms. Hunter, explain the justice.
Give us your name, please.
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Preston Lloyd. I'm an attorney with Williams Mullen on behalf of the applicant, H.H. Hunt Mosaic LLC. And as has been described, they are the applicant. However, as I think the board understands, this would apply countywide. And the purpose for this is, as has been explained, to try and align two things. One, the development timeline, making sure that the right things happen in the right order, but also providing accountability, that obligations that are required as part of the plan of development are going to be held to the county's expectations in terms of those being delivered and ensured that they've been provided. But we want to make sure that that accountability is done in a way that doesn't impose an additional burden of cost on the county, additional inspectors who are necessary to go out and conduct inspections and connections with certificates of occupancy. So what we had initially requested, as Ms. Hunter described, was a bonding solution, that we would essentially post security, and that that could be called by the county in the event that the improvements had not been made. That imposed a level of complexity that wasn't the ideal solution. And so what we've landed on here is one that was crafted in response to trying to balance those two goals. And when we have the slides, I'll be able to show you some of the impacts that happened. Essentially, as you can imagine, at the time of building permit, these are unimproved lots. Building permits are being pulled for a substantial portion of the lots, so greater than 50%. And at that time, under the current county policy, that would require all of the sidewalks and street trees to be installed. And when you're looking at homes that have the street frontage that homes in Mosaic have, they're smaller, it's a lot tighter, and you put in the trees. And you put in the trees, and then you start building the house. And when that happens, the trees die, and the sidewalks are damaged. It just happens as a part of the construction process. And so what this does is it requires duplicating effort in a way that imposes costs that ultimately gets passed along to the home buyer. So we thought, what if we can remove that burden to the home buyer, but also maintain the accountability that the board expects? You know that you want every developer to be able to be held accountable to their plan of development. And so that's really the essence of what this plan seeks to achieve. But I understand there are some questions about the third-party review process. We do see third-party as meaning third-party. It's not a member who's on staff with H.H. Hunt. And that would be, that's okay, I think we can perhaps manage without it. Thank you so much for looking, though. That it would be a third party, and of course, that language is subject to the interpretation of the director into how that would be enforced. Likewise, the county has a small roster of service providers who are its repeat customers, so to speak, the folks who are coming in and providing engineering services and providing plant submittals. It tends to be a lot of familiar faces to the folks down the hall in community development. And so in the event that one of these licensed individuals fails to perform, there are consequences beyond just going back and saying, you didn't do this. It can actually create reputational impacts for their ability to do business with the department moving forward. And certainly, there could be policy discussions regarding, is there a blacklist for folks who don't follow through with that, or if there's a three-strike kind of thing, that these are individuals whose certifications would no longer be accepted. Certainly, that would be within the purview of the director. But again, it's about trying to balance the timeline with the sensitivity to creating an additional fiscal burden on the county to enforce. So I'll pause there and welcome any questions that the applicant can answer regarding this proposal. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Mr. Lloyd, appreciate that. Any questions for the applicant at this point? Okay. All right, we reserve our right to come back.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay. All right, so we will open the public hearing on this countywide ordinance amendment. Anyone wish to speak to it, please come forward. You should sit closer to the front, Mr. Lyle, he's walking so far.
He's still in training for the marathon.
I hear you.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannequin Road. And yeah, I do wish there was more public here. I do not want to be seen as the gadfly and the guy who always stands up, but some of this stuff does interest me. And as I was reading what the proposed, I guess it would be ordinance changes, the words, "public necessity, convenience, and general welfare," for the citizens or for the developer, you know? And I guess developers are corporate citizens, I'm a business guy myself, but how many developers have been in here asking for it? And I heard Ms. Hunter say the development community, I think, and I don't know if that's one person, and we called them to ask their ideas, or if there have been a line of people saying, hey, you need to make this change. Ms. Laskolet was very perceptive, I think, because I was thinking the same thing. All right, you got lot 10, 7, and 6, and so you've got sidewalks, and then you've got empty lots. And I've drummed through Mosaic, I was curious to see it. You may recall, I was not a big proponent of taking prime M1 development land and turning it into residential, but that happened, so now we live with it. So, and we heard about the county's expectations and accountability. Has this development met the county's expectations, and has there been accountability? And I'll just say the word buffer, and let that lie out there a little bit. So do we have credibility with these folks? And did they know this going in? This ordinance has been on the books for three years. I think this was approved maybe two years ago, a year ago? So now it's like, okay, I knew the rules, I asked for it, now that I'm doing it, I'd like you to come back and change. And I understand circumstances change, and there's a need to adjust, adapt, and overcome. I don't want to be process-driven and immovable in making adoptions, but I don't see this as a benefit to the citizens, the resident citizens of the county. This is somebody saying, whoops, we have an issue with our subcontractors who don't know how to drive trucks, or cement mixers, or bulldozers, and that's creating a problem for us. I don't know that you need to pass it on to the consumer. I've been in business long enough, when my staff makes a mistake, I eat it. It's on me. It's not something that gets passed on to that consumer. So I hope you will not approve this, because now it's countywide. Does the word "bridge water" and "bonds" bring any memories back? I mean, how do we know the next developer in the western part of the county is going to live up and do this the way it's being proposed or purported to be done by H.H. Hunt? I think it is a problem that is for the developer, not for the citizenry here in the county. I don't see why it needs to be changed. They knew the rules when they were coming in, you know? Suck it up, buttercup. I mean, I'll sit down, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle, appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. All right, board, any other questions, comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we deny the application as presented.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, just so we can discuss it.
Absolutely, okay. All right, so we have a motion on the table to deny. Is there further discussion?
I guess, you know, there's a couple of issues here, and one is, that have been raised by the citizens here. One is, is this in the best interest of the county to do a countywide ordinance change, or is this in the best interest of development community, is it in the best interest of a particular developer, or is this for the greater good of the county? And that's where I'm having trouble clearing that threshold of, is this in the best interest of the county generally to do a countywide ordinance change? But it seems like we haven't had a problem with this issue historically, and it sounds like county was wrestling with, the county staff was wrestling with, this is going to place, you know, a demand and stress on our county resources, and so let's try and do a couple of different workarounds. We'll try the bond thing, that creates complications. We'll try the subcontracting out to a third party, that creates some complications. It sounds a little bit like we're trying to twist and turn to avoid overburdening staff and do something that we, does it clear that burden of, it is in the best interest of the entire county to change the ordinance? So those are some of my thoughts that I was wrestling with as I heard the comments in the discussion here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other comments?
Just playing devil's advocate, it's been in effect for three years, but how many scaled developments have we had in the last two or three years where we had sidewalks, streets, curbs? A lot of the developments are two-acre lots or larger. They don't have curbs. It's somewhat of a new concept in Goochland where neighborhoods are being built like In speaking with another developer who did not request this, they said that they do have problems with it. And I think I agree with what the citizen said, that it's not a, it's the citizens to fund things, but when someone is building and they have to go back and repair and rebuild the next development, the prices go up. So in essence, the citizens do end up paying. It's kind of like saying, when you raise corporate taxes, corporations pay it, not people. The people pay it. So I think in a lot of ways, it does affect. And in terms of how things are built out, if you've got a section of 49 homes, when you get to 25, you've got to have all this done for all 49. I think what they're more indicating is people come in and we open an area, we, people buy different lots based on what house they want to build. You can build a three-bedroom on that, but you can't build a four-bedroom on this. Lot's not big enough. But they tend to sell those things out in smaller areas. You don't typically walk into a development, and we've been through H.H. Hunt, and you don't typically see a house here, and a quarter of a mile down, another house with nothing in between. So I think that typically, they sell things, they'll build out a section, maybe pour a section of 10 or 12 houses, instead of doing all 25 at the same time. So that's my devil's advocate. My only concern is if it's a third party, it has to be unaffiliated, not owned by not They've got professional liability insurance, if they goof it up, their professional liability pays money damages. If it costs the county anything, we go after them, you know, for their money damages. I don't know that it's that bad a thing. I don't know that it's that bad of a concept. And I don't know if we are in phase with other locales, not because the Smiths do it, we should do it, but would this be, Ms. Hunter, would this be in going along with what other locales do, or would we be the Lone Ranger?
So we did benchmark, and, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that information with me, but there's a variety of ways of when this has to occur. Some of them are, once you hit 30 building lots in a section, then you have to have the sidewalks installed. The difference is, is that most of the bigger localities, say Chesterfield, Hermrico, Hanover, they would have three different departments go out and do the CO inspection. We have the inspector who also reviews plans and also goes out and does the CO inspections. They're checking for the zoning setbacks, they're checking for the, making sure all the building requirements are met. So there, we have one person doing what other localities have, three different departments go out and verify correctness and things like that. So I think that's the big difference.
So even though it might make sense, it might not make sense for us?
That's correct, because of our staff size, and.
That's my question.
Yeah, I think I had given you some statistics before, that last year, on our busiest month, we had 25 building, COs, and our average month this year is 45 COs. So it really, the workload has doubled. So that's the concern by the building official staff.
Madam Chair, that's all I had.
All right, thank you, Senator.
So I thought it was very interesting that the, you can stand in the center, that the county's, or I'm sorry, the applicant's attorney, very base, bluntly said, we'll be passing these costs on to the clients. So, I mean, that's, I think we hear that, and I appreciate all of Mr. Lyle's comments, and I agree with them. One of them I did want to bring up, you know, I wasn't on the board when this was approved, but I was sitting in the audience till well past midnight for these, and, you know, what I did hear was that the citizens are looking to this board to keep them to their, to doing what they say they're going to do and how they're going to do it. I don't think it should be, I think, I don't want it to get lost in Mr. Lyle's comments that the applicant knew that this was our process, that they knew this was our ordinance, and they knew that they could have asked for a conditional at that time, and they chose not to. Did they just miss it, or do they figure it'll be easier to get it passed through later on? I don't know. And I'll just end with this. On my first, on my way to my first board meeting, I got a call from a constituent congratulating me on going to my first meeting, and he reminded me of something. He said, you know, you're going to be dealing with ordinances. Those are laws. You're creating laws. I get calls from developers all the time about a lot of things. I've never got a single call about this issue. I've had citizens say that we shouldn't do it, other than this evening. So for me to think about the impact of changing an ordinance, I feel like this does not rise to that level. That's just where we are right now.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mrs. Spoonhour.
Madam Chair, Ms. Hunter, if you would, thank you. At least you're not sitting in the back like Mr. Lyle.
I know where to sit.
If H.H. Hunt was not in Goochland, would you be bringing this in front of the board? It calls for speculation, I understand.
I don't know.
I'm just wondering why you haven't brought it to us before.
So we wouldn't have brought it forward, we felt, like our ordinance was working. It's an applicant-initiated ordinance, so that's why we brought it forward.
All right, fair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Ready to vote? All right, Mr. Young, if you would, please, roll call vote.
Supervisor Sharp?
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Just to clarify, the motion is.
Yeah, let's clarify the motion. I'm so sorry, I should have done.
If you don't mind.
The motion is.
To deny.
To deny the application. Okay, now, I apologize, we should have done that.
Yes.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes.
Supervisor Spoonhour?
Yes.
Supervisor Lumpkins?
Yes.
Chair Laskolet?
Yes. Sorry, the application is denied. Okay, that's the end of our public hearings for tonight. If there's no further business, that we will adjourn to this next Monday, November the 9th, at 9:00 a.m. We will be meeting with the school board and other county officials, and our county's legislative delegation at Central High School Cultural and Educational Complex on Dogtown Road, and that meeting is open to the public. Then we will meet on Tuesday, November the 24th, it'll be, well, 1:00 p.m. The Board of Supervisors Audit and Finance Committee meeting will be held in Conference, Board Conference Room 270. That meeting is open to the public. And then also, on Tuesday, November 24th, at 2:00 p.m., we will hold a special meeting in this board meeting room, and that meeting is open to the public. If there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.